Seven o'clock, uh convene this meeting of the Wakefield Planning Board for January fourteenth, twenty twenty five. I'll do a roll call, uh attendance, uh Bill Spalding.
Here.
Kevin York. Matt Lowry.
Yeah.
And myself here, so we have a quorum at this time. First item of business of the meeting is approval of the December tenth, twenty twenty four. Meeting minutes has any, every member of the planning board had the ability to review and or um provide any questions or comments. Seeing none, do I hear a motion to accept the meetings at, the meeting minutes as presented?
So moved.
To our second.
Second.
So, uh roll call vote, Kevin York.
Yes.
Matt Lowry.
Yes.
Bill Spalding?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So, meeting minutes of the December tenth, twenty twenty four, Planning Board are approved four to nothing. So, the next item on the uh the current agenda is the subdivision rules and regulations. I'd like to come back to that if, if and when Theo is able to attend since he is the one spearheading that effort. So I will proceed to item number four on our agenda, the potential ADU zoning amendment. So with that, I'd like to pivot this to Sam.
Let me unmute myself. Good evening, everyone. Um so you should have all gotten a copy of the ADU. Uh zoning amendment draft that I put together um based off of. Some research and sitting in on webinars and getting the state guidelines um and kind of going over. With other department heads, some of the other concerns um that will play into our ADUs. There's a handful of. Of very small little changes, more just like typos um that I need to fix, but overall, this is kind of. A good draft for starting. Um there's also, which I did not send out to you and I can send out later. Um an ADO, a kind of review matrix. It allows us to go through and kind of expedite the process um. So is the zoning appropriate? Um are you meeting the required setbacks? If there's an addition or a detached structure, are you within? Wetlands, are you near a commuter rail station or half a mile from a commuter rail station? So there's all these different components that are trying to. Allow us to have um. Kind of a administrative review process versus having to go through the special permit. Or um the site plan review every single time. So as of right now, um. I can go over, I just wanted to give a brief overview. So when I do start talking of what the matrix is, so when I start talking about the matrix, you're. You'll know what I'm talking about. Um, do you want me to go through the entire amendment? Or did you want to just get into the discussion of it? What would you like me to do?
Other, other members of the board, I, I think there might be worth going through relatively short documents. So I think unless uh I hear objections. I was going to propose that we go through the draft amendment in its entirety, uh Mr. Spalding.
Yes, and um thanks Sam for putting this together. It's um sitting in on those webinars and all that stuff. There's. Sam, do you think it's worth going through the Executive Office of Housing and Livable?
E O H L C, yeah.
There um like the mun- the municipality roles, like what exactly is going, because it's different than the MBTA communities, as you know, because it's. Like the, the AG, the Attorney General's office is going to review um the zoning bylaw amendment in the. E O H L C is not going to be involved in that part, so.
Right.
Worth starting with?
Yeah, I can go over a little bit of it. It's, I mean, some of that's kind of baked into the, the bylaw as written. So, yeah, I was um planning on kind of. Going over the basics of it. Um so, uh just as a quick overview to back up and, and really zoom out. Um, the Affordable Homes Act, which was approved last year by the state um or at the state level, allowed. ADUs by right with some, a very minimal list of parameters. Um that had to do with parking in relation to the proximity to transit. Um, the size limitations of an ADU, the fact that they have to be, some variation has to be permitted on every single. Single family, make sure I'm saying this actual term correctly, single family residential zoning district. Um, it has to be allowed by right in some capacity, whether it's within the existing structure attached and in, in an addition or detached. Um, and we have.
Be clear, that's the way the, the state law was written. That is something that will go into effect regardless of any action that is or is not taken by the town. And. February.
In February, yeah, I don't remember the exact date off the top of my head. Um, but it will, I haven't piled, I'm sure. I mean, it's somewhere in the stack of stuff. Um, but it is, it is something that is going to affect um whether we have everything, February second, twenty twenty five. Um, so whether we have this updated or not, they will be allowed by right. They cannot have a relative restriction. They cannot have an owner occupancy restriction. Um, they. Can have a short-term rental prohibition or some sort of limitations on that. Um, and they also have parameters on how much parking you can actually require. And then a handful of other things. So the way that I'm proposing to outline ours um is very similar to ones that have been done. In other municipalities around the state. Um, it's as effectively as simple as possible. It's getting nested under our accessory uses. Um, it's broken up into, into some sections on here. The definitions would be added to the main definitions for the overall zoning um zoning code. So, and I just started drafting it in the format of what it would need to be for an article. So that's why it says definitions to add. Um. And so, we want to make sure that these different components are really explicitly spelled out. There's um. Really, the goal of this, of the um, of our ADU bylaw and of the state is to be able to provide additional year-round housing. So, one thing I want to draw immediate attention to is that short-term rentals are prohibited. And um ADUs, whether they're in the house or detached or in addition, it's just prohibited. You have to have at least a six-month lease. Um, which.
Hey Sam, before we start diving into the details, which.
Yes.
I fully appreciate. I just want to restate, anyone who may be watching this afterwards. This is a state law that will be going to effect February second, regardless of if Wakefield does anything or not. The whole purpose that we're talking about even doing anything is to make sure that we maintain as much local control. And to make sure that any uses that we don't want are not added. Against the wishes of, of. The, either this board or the town meeting. So what we are undertaking right now is a. Zoning amendment that would go into effect after this law is already in place and in effect, that would. Give Wakefield some degree of additional control over this state law and the impacts of it. So this is not some. This is not coming from the Wakefield Planning Board in such that. This is going to affect regardless because it's a state law and we're trying to make sure that we have as much local control as possible. Just to be a hundred and ten percent clear.
Right, and we also want to make sure that the conditions and the criteria that this, the local municipality that Wakefield can. Outline and regulate, that that is very clear. And also to. Clarify what the process for filing, for one, actually looks like. Um, because as of right now, it will likely go to site plan. It is allowed, it is permitted by right, but it'll go, it'll likely go through a full site plan review. Um, and so it'll have an additional extended period of time that it will take. Um, and additional monies to go through that. And you can't say no to an ADU. Um, by state regulation, um from the Affordable Homes Act, we are not allowed to say no to an ADU. We can just. Put further limitations on them as in setback, we can um limit their maximum size. Uh, and we can look at kind of balancing the idea of adding in some of this missing middle housing. Supporting the seniors of, I mean, really, it's, it's ultimately going to significantly um impact seniors. That want to stay in the community as well as those with um disabilities or who have older adult children with disabilities. Who want to be able to create a, an ADU on their property to allow them to stay in the area or stay close by. Um, so we really want to be able to make sure that we're offering an avenue that is very clear. Um, as the state currently has. Has it permitted by right, but it isn't explicit as to what that process would look like. Um, our regulations here locally have some stipulations that will become null and void as of February twenty, February second, twenty twenty five. Um, such as the owner occupancy and the relative clause. And also the size is going to change. So we just, the ADU bylaw is just to codify what the state has already mandated. And it's also, again, to clarify what setbacks are supposed to follow because. An ADU is technically an accessory use and as of right now, it isn't explicit in our code, whether you're. Having to follow the standard setbacks or accessory setbacks. So, um, we, I, we want to try to make sure all of that is, is cleared up. Is there anything else you wanted to add, Jim, before I continue?
I, I don't think so. So, o- other members of the board, does anyone else object to the idea of just going through? Maybe not reading the whole thing, but going through and, and looking at the clauses as a group. Okay.
Yeah, that, that seems reasonable.
Oh, Mr. Lowry?
Yeah, I do have one quick question. Maybe we can get this out of the way upfront. The, does, is there any affordability component? Will these count towards our affordable numbers at all?
Um, in order for it to count to the affordable units, there has to be an agreement entered in with the state, a regulatory agreement. Um, there is not clarification from, you can also call them HLC, just FYI, EO HLC or HLC. Um, we have not gotten clarification on what that process could look like. Um, there is potential for these to be affordable units. Um, whether they are big A affordable or little A affordable, meaning whether they're big A as an official. Um, or they're little A will, um, either way, they're likely going to hit. A reasonable affordable market. Most of these are not going to be listed up at that luxury level of like three thousand dollars um because of their size limitations. Um, so I am still waiting for clarification on the state. They've gone back and forth. In all of the webinars, the attorneys and everybody's kind of postulating back and forth as to whether or not they'll be permitted. What that process is going to look like, if there is a capacity or some sort of avenue for them to be able to be added. Um, the hope would be that they, that some of them could be added, but we don't have a definitive answer quite yet.
And do you know if the answer is going to come up in the next couple of weeks when this goes into effect or would it be after that?
I, I don't know. Um, I'm trying to stay as up to date on the state. They only released regulations. The, or guidelines, regulations technically from the state recently. Um. I don't even know that they have a date on them. I did print them out. I mean, I have them with me. Um, but. I, I don't think that they have it.
Uh, while you're looking for that, Mr. Spalding.
Yeah, just, Sam, I think in the November fourth webinar, um, one of the, um, the person from the AG's office. Um, she mentioned that the affordable housing not required or counted towards a ten percent. But if the homeowner does all the AH requirements, then it will count. But that was, it's still not confirmed. So it, that's where it still is?
Yeah, 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 that was the last I had heard. It's why I said they're postulating kind of back and forth. They're bouncing back and forth. The EO HLC first said yes, then they said no, and um.
Right.
They're really, I think the biggest issue is how do you regulate? If there's going to be thousands and, I mean, because. You know, people are, are really assuming that they're going to be thousands of these being built within the next couple of years, which I don't think is unreasonable. Um, especially, I mean, you know, they're, they're generally going to range.
To be clear, thousands statewide, not.
Yes, sorry. Yes, thousands throughout the state. So the state. Um, agency or the state office that will be manag- managing the S H I is uncertain of how. These could be added and managed through that process. Um. Because getting something listed on the S H I is not just a matter of filling out a single sheet of paper and handing it in. There is a whole bunch of processes. Um, and then two, there could be some additional regulations. Based on how you're renting it out, because typically it's done through a lottery system. So it gets very, very complicated. I completely understand why they're not certain. Exactly how that would work now. Um, under the currents, uh, the current parameters of how the whole system works. So I will continue to keep myself updated. Um, I'm signed up for every possible ADU. Email list that's out there right now. I forward everything to Bill. I'm sure he's probably getting sick of all the forwards, but there's tons of. Tons of webinars, updates from the state. Um, and so we just kind of have to keep kind of going through that. So, uh, if anybody has any other questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I can go through the, the zoning amendment.
I think we should just go through the zoning amendment. We've had, I'm sure that there's, there'll be more detail as we go through it.
Okay, um, so I did try to outline what the purpose and intent is, just so it's, it's pretty clear that the idea. Um, that we can tie it back into, the goal is to provide year-round housing. Um, so it's addressing that short-term rental component. And as well as um some things that are talked about in the. Um, housing, the previous housing production plan and then the, the new one that's going to be coming out, um, actually hopefully in a couple of months. Um, we're really.
This was actually one of the ones I wanted to, to have a conversation around, reading this. And, and other members of the planning board, you can, you, you can chime in. I, I believe that the bylaw. Review committee, when we were reviewing our bylaws with Attorney Bobrowski on the beginning portion of that process. One of the things he had commented on was a, a number of the section where we have purpose and intents listed in our specific overlays. And a concern regarding whether or not, A, what's, what's the purpose of them? And B, are you creating opportunities for people to create standing when you may not be intending on doing so for any potential land court lawsuits? So, when I saw this, it made me immediately think, does this, is this purpose and intent while. Totally understandable why we would include it. Is it something that would be theoretically necessary for an ADU? Versus just having the requirements and restrictions outlined.
Sure, um, I think one of the important parts of including it is the intent for this to be provided as year-round housing. Um, additionally, it's, it's backing up the existing housing plans. It ties it in together. So if somebody is going through an avenue or we're having to evaluate an application for an ADU as to whether or not it's in compliance. Um, if somebody's trying to say, seek a special permit to make one slightly larger, um, you would have. The code as well as the bylaw, um, not the bylaw, the existing housing production plan as well as the master plan to turn back to. Um, and base that off of. If, I am happy to reach out to the, the bylaw review committee and see if that's something that they'd rather have taken out in general. Um, I haven't gotten any comments on it back yet. Um, but. That's just where it comes from. Most of the other ones to, around the state do have a section for purpose and intent. Um, but again, happy to, to take that back under consideration.
Does any, do any other, other members of the planning board recall that conversation we had when we had that? It wasn't a joint meeting, but it was a meeting by the bylaw review committee that a number of members of the, the planning board and ZBA attended.
Yeah, I, I don't recall if it came up specifically then, but I know on bylaw review committee, he has mentioned that a few times in the past. But just to Sam's point, I think. Section A there to emphasize the year-round rental aspect probably makes sense to keep in, but. I don't think it hurts to send it to him to get his opinion on it.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I have no problem on sending it to more people. I mean, really, like, I, I very much welcome more hands to, to review it. Um, I think a lot of this, especially C, comes into consideration with allowing additional. Uh, a larger size as an option through a special permit. And that's part of the justification behind that because you're looking at senior citizens. Um, those who are disabled, whether that's a young adult, uh, um, you have an adult child who's disabled or a senior citizen. Or even just a, you know, anybody who's, who's disabled, who would like to be able to maintain their existing structure and, and add this ADU that meets their disability needs. Um, that would kind of helps to understand why we're offering an option for somebody to increase the size. Up to twelve hundred square feet, um, which is the size of kind of a. Um, where there's like those cottage court, the cottage developments, that's the maximum size that those typically will go up to and they're. Pushing two bedrooms, you really can't quite get, I mean, you could get three very, very, very tiny bedrooms in. But generally speaking, for senior citizens and those with disabilities, they're going to want accessibility. And so going up to twelve hundred square feet on a larger lot, like those that are SSR is a, is a potential. Um, anyway, that's kind of where that is, or at least that's where that was coming from. I am, and tying it back into the housing production plan, I'm more than happy to send it to, um. The bylaw review committee and get their commentary back. It's been for, I think it's already been forwarded to them. If not, it's been forwarded to everybody else. Um, I'll have to go back and double check my email. Um, as I, when I sent it out to y'all. Last week, I also sent it out um to the department heads and those who, who were invited to the first meeting I had. Just so, again, I knew what the concerns of everybody were. Um, anyway, so continuing on, under procedural requirements. It explicitly states it has to be tied to a single-family use. Um, and is listed explicitly as an accessory use to a single family. It can't be a standalone use. So that ties it back into the, the use component later on where it talks about you can't subdivide the parcel. So, an ADU will never be considered a condo. It will always be seen at least. Under current law. I know they changed that recently in some other states, but right now in Massachusetts. Um, it is considered just an accessory use to a primary use, which would be the single-family dwelling.
And Sam, under procedural, I, I wanted to ask, uh, item number B. The construction of any accessory dwelling unit shall be in conformity with federal's. Uh, state, local regulations, including historic requirements as applicable. What's the purpose of that? Because isn't that a, you know, a de facto requirement that you have to comply?
I can absolutely take it out. Um, it was in a number of other ones. And so, again, I just was trying to um not reinvent the wheel and go off of some of the other ones to use as a foundation. So this is just our, our first stab at it. So feel free, if anybody else wants to, feels it's redundant. It's perfectly fine to have that removed.
Does anyone else have a, an opinion on that? I just. Wasn't clear if there was, what the reason was.
Yeah, I agree. Taking on any redundancy um is best because we're probably adding in some other things on here. So. Um, if we can take out things that really aren't necessary or I think that would help. I agree.
Okay, um, and then C, does that mean that you want to have that removed? I mean, normally. There, there isn't anything spelled out otherwise and, and we can absolutely refer back to. File necessary, you know, paperwork with the checklist that's kept in-house or anything, if you'd rather not have that codified.
That one, I feel like it's almost like a rules and regulation thing, but in case any, it changes at any point. But the same time, it is probably nice to have it with the very minimum, the document, you gotta have a site plan, floor plans and elevations, just because. I feel like sometimes some submissions lack even basic things.
Well, and my goal is to, um, as part of the review matrix, I'm actually going to be creating an entire separate checklist. Um, that will have all of those different components. So I just had it included in here, so it's very explicit. People can't argue. It's not like, well, I don't think that the site plan really, you know, really matters because I'm not really doing anything. It's, it's. It's up to you whether or not you want to include it. Um, either way, there will be with the ADU review matrix that I have. That'll be kind of an, an, an in-house document. Um, there's also a kind of administrative. Application checklist. I'll be working with um the building inspector Ben on getting that done as well. So, it's up to you.
Sorry, Mr. Noel, did you have a comment? I saw you unmute at one point.
Uh, no, I, I, I was going to echo you, but I, I think it's good to keep seeing in there.
Okay, um, and then the next component D just talks about that the application will be reviewed by the planning department, because I don't. Excuse me, I don't know if the title's always going to be senior planner, town planner, whatever, it's going to fall under, or director, whatnot. Um, so it's either going to be reviewed by myself or the building, well, planning department or the building department. Um. Prior to submission for permitting. So it needs to go through that entire matrix and make sure that they have all of those different criteria. Before they're even allowed to submit for a permit. Um, I feel like this is really important. Not only is it making the process very clear for the public. But it's also keeping us from having applications that are going forward that are not complete. Um, and things that don't need to go through site plan review. This is allowing for essentially an administrative review process versus sending every single application to site plan review. Which is a. A necessary step, um. In my opinion.
Mr. York, looks like you unmuted.
Could there be confusion or critique by having the application go to either the planning department or the building department? As opposed to just always going to one or the other?
Reason why I wrote both is if for some reason, the planning department or the departments get restructured. And they get smushed together, um, much like we no longer have anybody reviewing signs under the sign, sign by overlay area. Um, I don't want that situation to happen again. I want there still to be an avenue for an administrative review process. So I wrote. Or building department. I know Ben does not want to review them. Um, he has enough stuff going on. But it does allow at least somebody to be able to handle that. Whereas if that had been written in before, under the, the sign over, signage overlay. Um, district, then that could have been done on an administrative level versus always having to go to this process. And now nobody gets signs because there is no review committee. So that's why either or, um, and you can, we can. I, I'm happy to, um, you know, you can wordsmith it to say. Reviewed by the planning department in their absence, you know, deferred to, to building, building department or something along those lines. That's perfectly fine. I just think that it's important to offer a backup in case of restructuring.
Uh, I would err on that. It goes to the planning department first and then the building department. So there'd be two levels of review. If it just goes to the building department, they're reviewing it, then they're basically approving it. There's, there's, there's no check on that. So. Uh, to me, having, not that you're jumping through hoops, but there's a process where. Consistency and, and on one side is then checked. Uh, on the backend. So that would be my preference.
I would tend to agree. I, I, not that. The existing building commissioner, existing building inspector wants to do this, but if there's another one at a future date and that there's. Confusion of which party to go to or can it be either? I, I think. To your point, creating a hierarchy where it goes to planning and then their absence to the building makes a ton of sense. The other thing that I, I, I just looking at this, I feel there's a reference to a matrix, which is, you know, as you mentioned, the, the review matrix. I believe that between the current C and D, there needs to be a reference to that matrix. Or the reference to it needs to be removed, one way or the other. You know, and we can maybe defer that to a, you know. Refer to planning departments, rules and regulations related to requirements and approval. Documents, something to that effect, and then we could define that matrix via the rules and regulations to give ourselves the ability to change it without a. Meeting, town meeting amendment in the future.
Yeah, because I definitely don't want it codified.
No, I don't think that makes a lot of sense at all.
Um, and it probably would, it could easily be housed, I think, under planning department, just because it's, it borders on subdivision. Um, and you want to make sure that somebody's not actually really trying to subdivide something. So, I, I think that's feasible. Um, I can double check with Mullen on, on how exactly we could phrase that as well. Um, the town council. Uh, and figure out how exactly he would recommend us writing that as such. Um.
Because I think the intent is correct here. It's just a matter of giving us, not codifying something that. Isn't specifically defined or point to where the definition would be.
Yeah, um, I mean, I can add a definition for it if you really want that in the, in the back, but I don't.
Be honest, I'd rather refer everything to a rule, to the rules and regulate, you know, some generic, um. Language, if other members of the planning board agree, saying that the, the ADU. Approval matrix shall be maintained as part of the rules and regs of the planning board. And so long as the. Proposed ADU meets said requirements, then the planning department can issue approval. Without a site plan review, something to that general effect.
Okay, um.
It would, before, before you take that direction, is, e- e- everyone else on the planning board okay with that as an approach? Okay. Okay, I'm going to assume yes, based on everyone nodding their heads. Um, anything else in terms of procedural requirements we want to review as a group before we move to dimensional requirements? Okay, uh, so section three for the use requirements. So it looks like. The, I'm assuming that a number of these are re- related to the actual regulations from the state.
Yes, um, the, so we do have the ability to limit to one per lot. They give you the, the state gives the right for a local municipality to permit. Additional units through a discretionary zoning process, but the feedback I got from all the other department heads was no. Um, and the feedback I've gotten from the public when they first started talking about. Um, and the feedback I've gotten from the public when they first started talking about the concerns when they came up with MBTA communities as well as that we don't want to have a whole bunch of, you know, what's going to stop somebody from like effectively turning creating a, a triplex type situation. Um, so right now, as it's worded, you can only have one A D O period. There's no variance and explicitly states this provision shall not be subject to a variance or special permit. Um, whatever, however, that gets worded to in the future, trying to, to cover us. Um, that's uh, so that's going building off of a state regulation. A, B is the state regulation, um, which is the nine, up to nine hundred square feet are, or half of the gross floor area of the building. It needs to say the primary principal dwelling. I think that's the term they use, principal dwelling. But anyway, um, so gross floor area of the principal dwelling, whichever is smaller. Um, and then the property owner may submit a, this probably needs to re, re, for you, excuse me, be reworded, um, an application for special permit um, to increase the size up to twelve hundred square feet. And so that's that square footage is, is up for discussion. Um, it's the one that I am putting forward mostly um, based off of what other kind of the smaller cottage style affordable developments um, max out, most of them max out at is twelve hundred square feet or so. If anybody has any commentary on size, no. Okay, so um, C is just can't do a condo, can't subdivide the lot. It's all one thing. End of story. Here, they're, they're not creating.
Does that mean that a, every A D U has to be owned by the principal dwelling unit owner and therefore it has to either be a basically any A D U has to be a rental or a, you know, family member, those types of situations?
It has to be, yes, a rental or yeah, your extended family or friend or whatever. Somebody is, is living in a rent free. Um, in order for it to stay an accessory dwelling unit, which is an accessory use, it has to have a primary use. The primary use that it is attached to is a single family structure. If it is divide subdivided into two properties, then it is no longer an accessory use. You know, a, a, a use that's accessory to a principal or primary use. It is now two primary uses and that completely defeats the purpose of this. Again, the state may change the regulation in time. California ended up changing theirs and now they're in some areas, they're allowing them to be subdivided. I don't know that will that will happen. Um, but as of right now, we are allowed to do this. And so um, after discussion, this was one thing that came up very explicitly in the department head discussions that we really want to make sure that it's it's clear that this is an accessory use. You have to have a principal use to have it paired with. Um, you can't just have that be the accessory use.
So is that, so just to double check, that is the requirement for it to not be a condo for a form of ownership. That is based on Massachusetts state law, or is that as explicit choice based on feedback from the department heads?
Um, that's a, so the state has, does not have an explicit statement one way or another. Um, they're not providing at, at, at least not that I remember. Um, maybe it's hidden buried in something else, but they're right now not providing any use because again, in order to have this be considered an accessory dwelling unit, which is an accessory use that you have to have a principal use and maintain that principal use. Um, but should, we just want to cover ourselves for right now, in case that can of worm gets opened up at some point in time. Um, we don't want somebody condoing the property and subdividing it as part of this. Um, in reality, it doesn't, it's not going to change the density of the property. It's not going to change the use of the property. Um, but the avenues we have right now, and I mean, I can get into like housing theory and zoning theory and all kinds of other things and but right now, the, the concern is that a apartment is, is looked at for whatever reason, an accessory apartment is looked at, has different regulations than a multifamily structure. And so it, it, it just complicates things really heavily if they try to change it and pull it apart. Um, versus having it be an accessory use. When it's a standalone use, it just gets a little bit more complicated um, with building codes and how trash is handled and how addressing is handled. So the request was for it to have an explicit note that it cannot be subdivided.
Sam, uh, would we want to use something else besides subdivide? Because uh, an A and R process is explicitly not a subdivision. But it's, it's a lot split. So, you know, by using the word subdivide, someone, you know, there, there are ways to get around that.
Sure. So how about create individual lots? Some, I can rephrase that to.
I would almost say create a lot with, create a, uh, two separate lots with the A D U and the principal dwelling unit, because you don't want to make it so if someone has an A D U, they can't ever do an A and R for some unrelated lot transaction. But you ultimately, the goal is you don't want them to take, to create an A D U and then eventually create two separate lots with an A D U and a separate lot with a principal dwelling unit, because then they could theoretically start carving up the A and Rs, multiple A D Us.
Yeah, I mean, it just, it, it opens a can of worm if that, a can of worms, if that's the way, because you could yeah, um, we can postulate and all the different things that people could potentially do in that capacity. But yes, I can, if, if create is better language. Um, to you, Matt, I'm happy to rework that C um, component as well.
Yeah, and it might be something to run by attorney Mullen and just see what the best best term to use there, but I'm always hesitant on subdivide because.
Totally understandable.
Yeah.
People holding on, yes, um, holding on to the words. Okay, so for.
Can, can we, um, can you say including but not limited to condoization, subdivision?
I would almost advocate to say the lot shall not be split such that the uh, A D U and the principal dwelling unit shall be on separate lots. Like if you, if you're going to create an A D U, the intent is really to have the A D U always be on the same lot as the principal dwelling unit, right?
Right, yeah. And I can work on, I mean, there's a lot of different ways, I think, to write that particular one. I can get together with attorney Mullen, kind of rework some language and I mean, we have, we absolutely have time to review this at the next meeting before it needs to be referred to town council to then be referred back so that it can go for town meetings. So I'm happy to to work on that. Um, is any other questions on C or can I go to D? No, okay. So D, um, again, just as stated earlier, uh, prohibits short-term rental use. Um, so that we are working to support the year-round housing in Wakefield. Um, it limits it to six months as that's six to seven months is a general um, full-term lease that's considered in areas where people are going to school. So that was kind of what I was using as the, the basis, um, because most people would not like book a sho-, book a short-term rental on a six-month period and then cancel it typically in a lease or something like that. It would, you know, you'd have consequences for that. So that was my suggestion. Feel free to um, and, and that's based off of other, other municipalities that have that as well. Feel free to um, let me know what you'd like me to change that to, if anything.
And Sam, what is the uh, enforceability component of this? Who's going to make sure that someone is doing it for at a minimum of six months? Okay, that's, that's you know, I, I'm looking at, at many ways to, to get around this. So, uh, you know, I don't know how we can put protections in there. Yes, we can say it's got to be six months, but if, no one's going to be enforcing it.
Sure.
It's gonna be.
Matt, I think the reason that the logic is that, tha- then if you see someone post something on Airbnb, you know, then Airbnb is not for six months. So it gives the, the reporting structure to the building inspector. So you're not going to ta-, you're unlikely to be able to enforce something that's a five-month lease, but you're gonna be able to catch people who are doing, you know, the week-long stays for Airbnb. I mean, that's fundamentally the logic, right?
Right, so there is a um, through, through the trip, just to give everybody a brief overview, there is not a avenue right now for any regulation of short-term rentals. Um, they exist in Wakefield in a very gray area because there is no definition of them. And they are not, for some reason, they are not explicitly prohibited through a lack of definition, nor are they explicitly permitted. So they are just allowed to continue even when they've been turned in um, and reported at this point in time. Um, the long-term plan that I've had conversations with other departments on is that the goal is to have a registry of short-term rentals. Um, and because it, in theory, we should be collecting a tax on that. Um, whether people like that or not is an entirely different conversation, but this gives us the basic structure. Um, again, it was similar to what was included in the MBTA communities overlay. It gives us at least the foundation to have something to build on once that component goes through. Um, if you want to also work on a short-term rental regulation, um, by all means, that's another thing that is, or at least at some point in time, probably does need to be addressed. Um, because of, in an area where we already have, you know, limited housing, limited housing stock, um, short-term rentals dramatically increase the price and reduce the availability of market rate housing. Um, so it is something that does need to be addressed at some point in time. Um, in some capacity, but this effectively allows us to at least make sure people know it is explicitly on the matrix that I put together. Um, are you proposing to use this as a short-term rental? If yes, then you cannot do it. Um, so there, you know, obviously people can lie. I can't stop that from happening. Um, and if there is an avenue for penalties that you want to seek, by all means, please let me know. Um, we just, right now, we don't really have a number of different building inspectors that are able to go out with building enforcement inspectors. I don't know what you want to call those. Um, so we don't have code enforcement. It's just our building inspection inspectors is what I'm trying to get at. Um, so we would need an avenue. Uh, or some guidelines for how you want to be. I don't know, addressing that. And if there is ever a, the ability to have these A D Us added to the S H I, then that's also something that we would be checking on because in some capacity, they would be required to report. Um, excuse me, yearly. And you could potentially offer, um, and this really gets into the weeds on everything, so feel free to stop me, but you can potentially in the long term, offer if a unit is permitted to be listed on the S H I or that the owner decides to do that, you can offer a tax incentive, property tax incentive. Um, like you get a credit for having an A D U that is listed on the S H I. Um, those are ways to incentivize it. It's also a way to have some sort of checks and balances on the fact that it's being used as a year-round rental. Not just that it's affordable. So um, there's a lot of different ways to go about this. I don't have a clear answer for you and I'm happy to take guidance. Again, this really was just kind of working on getting a foundation for this, um, and addressing the concerns of the public, because this is one thing they are, they were going on and on about at the MBTA community meetings is that they don't want, now A D Us are coming and everything's just going to turn into short-term rentals.
So i- is, is there a permit that can be revoked or anything if someone is abusing this? Or once you're granted an A D U, you have it for life?
Um, I can ask the attorney what type of enforcement we could have. I can ask attorney Mullen, um, what are some avenues that we are permitted? I mean, I don't know if you can revoke a C O after it's been granted. And how you would even enforce that.
I believe you can for repeated ongoing violations in non-conformance with your issue, you know, certificate occupancy, supporting, you know, the conditions of it. That there, that would be a theoretical mechanism.
It would seem like there would be something, because if you, if you put a an accessory apartment in the backyard and then a year later added a second floor to it and doubled the size, there's got to be some way to somehow put a halt to that and, and in, in, I'm playing devil's advocate here because I know other people are going to be asking the same questions. So I want to see if we can get something the conversation started of, of how this can be regulated once it gets going.
Yeah, I mean, the easiest way in my opinion, or the cleanest way, I should say, um, is really to do that through a municipal-wide short-term rental prohibition or some sort of short-term rental regulation, whether you're allowing a room to be rented, but not the whole dwelling. Or you're allowing, you know, so it's more of a single-room occupancy type situation. Maybe that is what you want to permit versus having the whole unit. Because the whole unit is really what's impacting that long-term or year-round housing and the market rate housing availability. Somebody renting a room while in your house or staying in your house while you're out of town. Um, you know, that's, that's a limited impact. So I don't, I, I don't have all of the answers. It's, um, but I am, I am happy to reach out um, to attorney Mullen and then I can bring that back at the next meeting um, with as much feedback as I can with the other components that you have also asked about.
Uh, and do anything else on the A D U item or do we, are we comfortable to move to the next? The next section?
In one other, are you mean short-term rental?
Yeah, sure. We moved to the next, next item. So going from T to E.
Yeah, um, so uh, so E is just, we need to have an entrance. If it's not an individual entrance, it can be a shared lobby. Um, but we need to have some sort of entrance. I don't know. Uh, I think really what this is permitting is, or just stating is, um, or the way I've phrased it, I'm probably not the best, but stating that you can utilize a single entry door if you have an entry lobby. Um, or you can have, and/or you can have a dedicated entrance that's separate. Either is fine. Um, any questions about that? Or wordsmithing of it? No, okay.
Is the, is the, sorry, I'm trying to understand, but what you're trying to address, you're trying to make sure that someone doesn't have an A D U through like a party wall in there? In, in the access your egress through one unit to get to the second unit?
Yeah, so you want to make sure it's not set up like single-room occupancy or like a boarding house. Essentially, which is a single-room occupancy is just a fancy name for boarding house. Um, so you want to make sure it's not set up like a boarding house. That is allowed and in its own right, under certain zoning districts. And, you know, parameters need to be met. That is a a boarding house type situation um, has different zoning and fire codes than a plain residential structure. So you want to make sure that people understand that I, a, maybe the A D U um, shall have a dedicated entrance either from the exterior or through a shared entryway. I can rephrase it to that. Or something like that, to make it a little clearer.
I, I think that's probably more clear. I, I, when I read this, I was trying to figure out what, what the harm that we were trying to address was. I don't know if other members of the planning board had the same experience.
That's, that's fine. I can amend that one. Um, so going, does anybody have any other commentary before I go to F? No, everybody shaking their heads. Okay, shaking their heads, no. So F, um, so right now, this is one of the things I was saying is that the A D Us are kind of hanging out in a gray area under Wakefield zoning, because technically they're an accessory use, so they could use accessory dwelling or accessory structure setbacks, but they are, um, unless they're in addition. The way it's phrased for detached A D Us under the proposed bylaw with that would be that it's a split the difference kind of situation. So instead of following the standard setbacks for the principal structure um, or following the accessory structure, which is a five-foot setback or a seven-foot setback. I don't remember. I'm sorry, I've read so many different codes lately. Um, it's a ten-foot setback on site and rear. It allows ample room for fire um, to be able to walk around the to be able to walk around the building, building maintenance to be at, to be done, to be accessed and utilized for maintenance and, and construction. And five feet is feasible. It is a historic setback, five to zero. It's not uncommon to have seen garage apartments. But it does present not only maintenance issues, but fire safety issues. So I'm suggesting that we look at doing ten, which does decrease the required setback, but it doesn't. It still maintains a, a enough space for safety and access.
The board have any comments on that, or are we good to move on?
Yeah, I, I think ten, ten foot is a reasonable setback.
The other one might have a little more commentary. This is through a recommendation from the state and in a lot of the webinars. That there is, that with an ADU, whether it's in addition to the primary structure or detached. There, it is not subject, the ADU component is not subject to the maximum building coverage regulation in our zoning code. If we do inflict or, I don't know, uphold the maximum building coverage, a lot of the existing structures aren't even compliant. So it creates a situation where we have the potential of having the state come back and say, hey, this isn't meeting the intent of our regulation, because every single property has to be able to do an ADU in some capacity. Whether that's within the existing structure or as an addition or a detached structure.
Yeah, I, I have no problem with it. I think that's, it's precisely the, the point. Otherwise, you're, you're no, you're negating the ability to add ADUs. And you're giving one, you're giving one property, you're expanding one property, right, but then taking it away and defeating the purpose.
The only question I have is that, does it make sense for it to be applicable to additions to a primary structure? So now you're going to have a portion of the primary structure does have to comply with the max building lots, but then you could have an addition that is not subject to it? I'm just thinking enforcement of first, I mean, I guess you'll, you'll, you'd have to have clearly defined principal dwelling unit footprints via plans and layouts and a clearly defined section. I'm trying to think, what if you put something, so if someone had an existing nonperforming and they put it the accessory dwelling unit on the second floor. You know what I mean? Like, there's a theoretically, I guess it doesn't really matter, right? Because it's, it would be existing nonperforming and even if you expand the the footprint. So that just to me, I'm just thinking in my head, ways to get around that, right? If you took a portion of an existing building and then you expanded the footprint of the building, but you had that be for primary dwelling and converted a portion of existing primary into an accessory.
Right, I think kind of, so part of where this comes from is, is not just from the state. Just to give some brief background, but if you look at how, so zoning codes were put into place after most of the housing stock in the area was developed. If you ever have a moment escaping the housing trap, I'm not trying to give a big plug or anything for the book. But I just finished reading this and I just sat in on a webinar in this today, and there's an entire chapter that talks about the zoning and what problems it causes for existing structures, like in Somerville. Somerville zoning code, if you do an assessment of their existing structures. And how many are in compliance with Somerville zoning code, it's twenty two. Twenty two structures are in compliance with their zoning code. And granted, we're not Somerville. But the point I'm trying to make and how this ties into Wakefield is that we have a similar aged housing stock. And in trying to I mean, and maybe, maybe the way is if you are constructing an ADU, building lot, maximum building lot coverage does not come into play. And that, just leave it at that and take out the component of saying whether in addition to the primary structure or detached. Because most of these structures as existing, they, a lot of them don't meet existing setbacks. A lot of them don't have. I mean, a lot of the lots aren't even proper lot size. They, you know, have a number of different issues that could potentially come up through somebody trying to construct an addition or trying to construct an ADU in some capacity. And so I'm trying to find a way to meet the state requirement of making sure that this is feasible on any property and figuring out how to address this issue that we will likely have in a number of, a number of different cases. So again, feel free to wordsmith. That was the intent of it. Is to not end up in a situation where we're effectively telling somebody, well, because you're doing this, now you have to bring other components of the code, or now you have to go look for, you know, a variance for the existing structure, because you're doing so much improvement and like just start to get into creating more complications.
Well, I, I have, now that we talked about that, I almost want to go back to item F, should, should there be a minimum or, or maximum distance from the existing building on the site? No, so you could, you could build an accessory dwelling unit two inches off the existing building, but have that over ten feet off of the lot line.
Well, you could technically have it be an ex, an expansion of your existing primary structure. Like combined.
Yeah, but I, I'm looking at someone building an, an ADU in the back of the house, but it's literally, it, it would appear to be the same building, yet they're saying it's two inches away. Uh, I know, and, and sometimes accessory, like Medford, you have to, it's an accessory use building has to be ten feet from the principal structure. So there's enough room to get between them.
So I, I want to say that our code right now says there, for commercial properties, there's a restriction, but for residential, there's not. But let me, and let me just scan through it. Feel free to continue talking amongst yourselves and just letting you know.
I feel like that in general, right? If, if you, if it's not, if it's a nonattached. If it's not in addition to an existing structure, there should be some amount of clear distance between the two distinct structures, if that's your proposed pathway.
Exactly. I mean, if we're going to have ten feet around for by firefighting, it should be ten feet between buildings on site two.
So you could be either an addition or a, a separate building with a ten foot setback. From any adjacent structure.
Yeah, ten foot offset from the, from the existing structure.
So I want to how can I phrase this? The, right now, just so you know, under current zoning code, there is no minimum building separation between buildings on the same lot in SSR or SR. Um, and this covers more because it covers GR, MR, business and neighborhood business. And it doesn't explicitly state distance between buildings except for under MR.
Well, that's because in, in a separate structure and SR and S, SSR would be like a, a shed or a garage, right? So like that would be a separate use case or separate type of structure than ADU.
Sure. So you could, what, what you could do is if you want to have a ten foot from existing structures. And that could be evaluated or could be relieved through, I mean, you can state that that particular component could be reviewed by or through a special permit process. So if somebody doesn't have the capacity. Like they could build an addition, but they can't build a detached one. That still meets the, the state regulations. But if they wanted to still go forward with the detached one, they would have to go through a special permit process.
Well, th- there has to be a, a life safety component to this, so I, I, I think you've got to have some minimums. If, if, if you want to put a detached structure on a, a lot and it's just too small. Then it'd have to be an attached structure. That's what it comes down to. So I, I don't I don't think that should be a discretionary, oh, well, in this case we will, because once you start doing that. Then everyone can say, well, you use discretion in this case, why aren't you using discretion in my case? Or it's only a half a foot smaller and then suddenly there's got to be a standard here, and I think a, a minimum should be, should be met.
You know, to Matt's point and to this discussion, I think we do list a bunch of other dimensional requirements. About the height and a few other things. Uh, I'm wondering if we do add to, I'm just looking through the document, there was a mention of how, how would it trigger a site plan review? And I wonder if that's where we add a nonconforming. You know, as we set some of these guidelines and requirements, do we add that site plan review? I'm looking for it. I don't know, Sam, if you can help me out. There's a if I remember correctly reading.
Well, it's, I think it's the one that talks about the matrix.
Yes, yeah.
It's, it's, it's two D. So it says if it doesn't meet this criteria, then it'll have a site plan review and or discretionary zoning review.
Right. Just trying to figure out how to connect the two as the use and dimensional requirements. We're getting there, but I just feel like there's somewhere.
Yeah, I can, I can keep working on it.
Yeah.
That's fine. We have a, a boo boo situation. Okay, and then G is the ADU, a- again, that's, so that's the maximum building coverage. So go get your Band-Aid, okay? Okay, so then with G tying back into F, you don't want to change that when you want to keep it as is. It's just really, you're going to be looking more at maintaining that safety distance.
Yeah, I, I, I think we should have, again, it goes back to life safety issues, so.
Sure, totally. I mean, fire safety, I mean, it's, it's a true, it's, it's a real concern. I think everybody sees that more too with, uh, what's going on with California right now is, you know, having some situation where people can readily get around buildings, get out of buildings, have safe access, egress, um, ingress and egress and all of that. It's completely understandable. Uh, like I said, I just want to make sure that I'm clear as I go through and, and rework this. Okay, so are we done with, what is that?
I think we should move on to H. Which is the one associated with the, the height.
Yeah, it's, um, just to make sure that it's secondary amassing, so you don't have like a one story structure and then like a you know, big huge addition coming up behind it. So that it maintains the primary that the principal structure maintains the primary
I would, I think this makes a lot of sense. I would just advocate to just delete almost the whole first sentence. Just because I don't, I think it's similar to like the whole co- question about, you know, standing or whatnot, or someone challenges us. I, I think that just stating that intent, I think we should just define what the regulations are and the requirements and as long as someone meets them. They should, shall be entitled to the issues of the permit.
And so an ADU addition or detached ADU, or I can say an ADU weather addition or detached shall not exceed
Below or
The height of the principal dwelling or twenty five feet, whichever is less. Okay.
That's at least my feedback. Um, if, if anyone from the planning board disagrees, feel free to chime in. Okay, uh, moving on to I.
I, yes. So we have a handful, literally just a handful of septic systems. Um, most people, almost everybody is on sewer. Um, but we want to be certain that somebody has gone through all of the proper channels. And so that's why I explicitly added it in here, that they either need to have it certified by Public Works. And, or they need to have Title V. And this is, this allows me to do the administrative review component to make sure that they've been through all of that. Um, without that, I would feel a little bit nervous about saying, yeah, sure, just go ahead. And then it ends up being one of those septic systems. Those like handful of septic system, I think we have like literally like only a dozen. But it's, it's more just a checks and balances, again, to allow it to go through that administrative process.
So shouldn't it say if if the property is not served by municipal sewer?
So it states both, um, either they need to have it certified by Public Works, that this is that it's an area of capacity, and this was something that they, and I can, I mean, I, that they had mentioned it. They don't seem to have any concerns, but there could potentially down the line be an issue. If the MBTA Communities Overlay areas get built out to capacity and then everybody tries to build an ADU and we end up having, you know, three thousand additional units, we could have capacity issues. That's part of why MBTA Communities has a special grant for water, sewer and all of those type of infrastructure, um, because it, it is, there's a potential for it. So right now it's not an issue. Down the line, it very may well be.
It, it just seems like another layer of, of something that doesn't need to be done. The, the DPW is going to know when more units come online. And if there's an issue with the sewers out there, they'll, they'll need to upgrade them or correct them. So I don't know if it really, if they need to review each one. Because they're not going to review the service, are they going to review the service from the building to this, to the street or just in the street?
Um, I don't know. It was a conversation that came up when we had the department head meeting. Um, that if, especially if MBTA gets built out, even half of the capacity that they're talking about, that there and then another thousand ADUs come online, then there may be concerns. But as of right now, there's not. I can, I'm happy to rephrase it. So that right now it just says Title V, and then should we down the line need to add in something, you can always go back and recodify it. I just left both in there to have it covered for now.
Yeah, it, it just seems like a lot of work that they're going to certify, you know. Does that mean they're going to put something in the file that, yes, the sewer system is fine? Uh, I, I don't, I just don't understand what, what they're going to be doing here.
Or I can also check with public work, Public Works, um, to see what kind of conversation they want to have on that, um, if they don't want to do it. Or if they want it just to be Title V or, or whatnot.
I mean, just when you say that they, they're going to certify something that implies that if there's something wrong, well, the, the town certified it was okay, so I'm just leery of using that, that language in there.
Sure, that's a language that's found in other ADU bylaws. So that's where, just so you know, I
That's fine, but I, I just, I can't see them. You know. Doing some documentation that it's, that's certified, that we've checked it and everything's fine. And if it isn't, then what happens?
Sure. So I can do one of two things. I can either just completely take it out for now and only Sure, so I can do one of two things, I can either just completely take it out for now and only leave the Title V component. Or I can double check with DPW and see what their preference is and then go from there. What would you like me to do?
I, I think get clarification on, on what. What the certification process is going to be, how it's going to be documented. And if it's actually going to be done in a timely manner to not hold up any permit.
Okay.
I don't know if anyone else has any thoughts on this, but it, it just seems like another layer of. Of something to slow the process down.
To me, it feels like we, Title V should be sufficient if the Board of Health is. You know, documenting the building commissioner that the sewer disposal will be satisfactory, then. Is getting DPW, is that just because you want them to do a double check on the physical infrastructure? They could be separate things.
It's more for, no, DPW didn't, wouldn't do a, a check, it's more for just down the line. Um, because again, like I said, they said in the future, there is the potential that we might not. The current system might not be able to handle it. So they, they may be, I mean, likely they're, they should be aware of their system and what it can handle and what steps they need to take to. Meet, um, you know, current or proposed demand, but I. I can't speak to that, so that was kind of just what I had put in there based off of the conversations we had had. Um, but again. I can just switch it to say Title V for now, and should we come down to something down the line? We could add the different component in there. Because yes, if we're trying to make this a easy administrative process, um. Adding in another department's certification or checks and balances, um, does muddy the process.
Especially given that the, the. Differential use for one eighty per application is. Not going to move the needle on the whole system, most likely. So unless other people disagree, I would, I could just remove the, the public DPW element and just keep the Title V for the Board of Health and. Move on.
I, I, I would advocate that, but I would probably say let's get a little more clarification on what. You know, if, if the DPW has some real concern here. Let us know and we, we don't want to discount their, their feelings on this, but then again. If, if they just put that in there for a placeholder for the future, I, I don't think it's necessary.
Moving on to J, related to square footage for ADUs over our garage.
Yeah, so it's just saying that the square footage of the garage itself, so if it, that, that it's not included unless it's for exclusive use of the ADU. Um, so if they're adding, uh, a separate garage stall, that's for dedicated use for the ADU. Um, because this was something that came up in a lot of the, in a number of the different webinars, does the garage itself? Include, so if it's, is it nine hundred square feet between both floors, or is it only nine hundred square feet for the garage? Um, for the section that's the apartment, so I just have that explicitly stating that the first floor garage space. Is not included unless it's dedicated to the ADU. Questions, concerns, commentary?
I think that one makes a lot of sense, seems like everyone, no one else has any comments.
And then, um, K allows it to be a modular dwelling, so I don't know if you've heard, but there are a number of companies that exist in. Actually throughout the country, it's not just in New England, that create kind of these modular. Semi prefab structures that are then assembled on site. Or finish the, the last components are finished on site, um, it's not. It's not a mobile home, it's nothing on wheels, it's not an RV. Or anything like that, it is a permanent structure, um, but the bulk of it is. Manufactured offsite, it allows for a substantially reduced construction cost. Um, like more than half the cost is reduced by constructing it this way. So we want to encourage people to be able to construct ADUs and as long as they're meeting. The building code requirements and having it attached to the ground properly for permanent construction on a permanent foundation. I don't want to, my recommendation is not to prohibit the utilization of these modular dwelling units that are. Specifically, um, designed to be accessory dwelling units.
Hey, Sam, I, I'm generally supportive of, of allowing modular construction, do you know if we have any conversations with? Building Department, because my understanding is one of the, the, the key issues with modular construction is adhere or. Ensuring adherence with all local building codes and the building inspectors comfort with. That element, uh, and I wanted to understand if that's something that, uh, the building inspector. Has put any thought into, you know, whether or not they would require. Inspections at the plant or in, you know, because all the elements are being installed in a plant offsite. Um, that's something that, you know, you can't do an in-wall drywall inspection. On site if the in-wall drywalls all covered up, for example.
Right, um, a lot of them end, end up having to have electrical and plumbing completely done on site. And a lot of finishing done, it's the structure itself, um, but you know, new whatever. Uh, technology advancements are made all the time, so I'm happy to reach out to him, he does have, he already has a copy of the ADU. Um, I've been talking to him since the ADU regulations came out, I think. I think I had the first meeting with everybody back in October. And I've gone over a number of different things, the matrix was something that, um, we talked about a lot, about really trying to have some way to make it really easy to go through. Um, so I'm also going to, like I said, also going to be doing a checklist that goes with that matrix to really expedite that review process. Um, but I can double check with him on the specifics of the modular component.
And honestly, maybe it's something that, you know, we probably don't want to codify in a zoning amendment, but if we're creating rules and regulations in a matrix. If modular is going to be a component, maybe there's a way to define what inspections are required or are not required, or what. That process looks like, just because my understanding is that that's one of the major impediments of the. The, uh, and not being clear what is or is not required, if that's something we truly are trying to advocate or allow. Or make more, uh, accessible for people to utilize as an option.
For understandable, um, and I know a number of them also have the different plans, the different components of the, the plans that you can get to, to, um. To cover all of the necessary checks that you need to go through on a local level, um. As I've been poking around on all the sites, trying to. Kind of get an idea for what's out there, so I will reach out to, um, our inspector and kind of just double check all of that with him. Um, on that particular component and then see if there's, maybe it's just putting in the definition for now for a modular dwelling unit. And not actually explicitly stating. One way or another, um, it is included in the definition section that is at the end of this. Does anybody have anything else on K, or can I just go over the parking requirements really quick? Um, so the parking requirements are codified by the state. So there is not much leeway we can have here, um. We do have the potential of explicitly stating whether we want to allow tandem. But at this point, I would recommend that it's not explicitly codified. Um, unless you feel strongly about wanting to codify it, because. You know, needs can change, things can change, and if we say yes, you can use tandem, and then all of a sudden we realize that that's not working at all. Then if we want to go back and change it, it's going to have to go through, you know, codification, but the, the way the state regulations are set up is if it's within half a mile radius. Of, uh, transit. So in our case, it's a commuter rail stop, um, if it's within half a mile, then there's a zero parking requirement, otherwise it can only be one per ADU. For everybody else.
Uh, I, I have a question and probably the only one here would have to deal with it, but. How would you, at what point from a commuter rail station would you measure? I mean, is there a defined area that the commuter, you know, that you measure from? And is it any portion of that lot that is within that, or how, how does that work?
Um, so. My notes had this more, uh, more explicitly, it's to any extent of a parcel. Um, now it says it's any constructed on a parcel within half a mile, so if a portion of the parcel is within half a mile. Really, I mean, you could do up to a mile if you wanted to, um, and we could be. Because most people who are even within a mile, if they're going to take transit, they likely would walk. Or a commuter rail, because parking is few and far between. Um, but again, that's entirely, entirely up to you. Right, I'm, I'm just letting you know, like, you, you can always do more, is all I was trying to say than the half mile, um, but the way I have it, it's not explicit. In the. Um, state regulations, so I have it is with any parcel. Now, as to where that half mile radius is, I would suggest utilizing the state. Radii that were given out for MBTA Communities, but we can codify that any, any way we want. Explicit.
All right, I, I just think there needs, I, I know it's going to come up where someone's going to say, I'm within half a mile, I don't need a parking space. Yet. You're going to get into a discussion of whether you actually are within a half mile or not, that always comes up.
Yeah, so when it talks about the station. It, I mean, we can explicitly state as part of the definition, the point on the map where the trains. Like have it marked as the station where they're picking up and dropping off.
We also want to add, sorry to interrupt, um, where it says half mile radius. So it does imply that it's. Like as the crow flies. And not as they walk down the street. So I just think the one word radius will help with that, this one is tricky, and I know it did come up in some of the comments of one of the. I think it was in the Brookline, an example that I have that I found, I think they had a similar. Um, comment, I was just looking for it, but I couldn't find it. If I find it, I'll share it with you, Sam.
Uh, I'm, I'm only asking this because, you know, I've literally had to measure a distance from a closet. To a school at one point to see if someone. Was going to face federal charges or not, so if, little things like this do come up. And there's going to be. People that are definitely going to be on the edge and are going to be, they're going to insist that they're. Um, within a half mile and their neighbors are going to say, no, they're, they're more than a half mile and. There, there's got to be some clear. Refereeing or, you know, what, you know, what is. What's the determining factor on this, and it just needs to be clear, it cannot be discretionary because. Again, that's going to lead down to problems.
So through the chair, um. If I could make maybe a recommendation is if we actually include maps in this. So it's very clear, if you're within this area, we could, I mean, it's just the, the two, the two. Technically three. We would have the three maps that were utilized by, by MB, well, I mean, you could break it up into two, but there's the. Wakefield Station. That's at, you know, North Avon Albion, and then there's the Greenwood Station. And then there's Melrose Highlands, so the maps that we were utilizing for MBTA Communities, we can just reutilize those. And include them, that radii.
Do other members of the planning board agree with that approach?
I like the idea of the maps, it's a good one.
Matt, does that give you enough specificity? I'm not going to comment on GIS quality maps, so. I, I can't do that, so.
I would like to add one part to the map, if the half mile radius. Is touching any part of your property in that radius, then your property would be included.
As part of. That's what we got to be explicit about.
Right, so if any part of your property goes through the half mile or mile radius, whatever we, um, come up with. I, I think that triggers the entire property is within that zone.
And, and just, just. And I only ask because now it gets into, does everyone in this zone need to be notified?
We don't have any requirement, even with MBTA Communities, there was no requirement.
I know there was no requirement, but we, but it went ahead and, and was done under the last round, so. I'm just, just playing devil's advocate again, so. I know there's no requirement, but it was done, and then that turned into a complete. A complete mess.
So the only thing to keep in mind is that the entire town is impacted by this bylaw. It's not just people within that half mile radius, the half mile radius, the, or one mile or seven, you know. Point seven five through quarter, whatever number you choose, um, the state just has a mandate of a minimum of half a mile. You can always do more, um.
And it's already in effect February second, regardless.
Right, so whatever radii you choo, whatever distance you choose. We can make a layer on GIS, to be very clear, we can include a map, um, but. N- notifying every single, I mean, you're, that's eleven thousand, over eleven thousand units, so.
Advocating for that, I'm just saying that it may come up, that's all. It has come up in the past, I'm just saying that, that's all, when you put a map out there, that is the problem, is that. People are going to be looking to see if they're in it or not, and. So I do hesitate on actually putting a map out there to tell you the truth, but there's got to be some way. That internally, you have a process that is checked and. Documented, so when the neighbor comes in and, and complains, there's backup for that, that's all I'm getting at. Again, I, I, I don't want to put another map out, we've got too many maps out, but. There needs to be a process established that's fair and consistent to deal with this. I guess that's what I'm getting at.
Sam, do you know if this, the state has any specifics in terms of how they define half a mile from the. Station, or is it just basically what we're seeing on the paper right here?
It's, um, I mean, the, the number that they've used or the. The GIS point, the. Oh my gosh, whatever that's called, latitude and longitude, it's, it's where the actual train lets you off, so the train will let you off at almost the exact same spot. And pick you up every single time, they have a, a, a point that they're supposed to be hitting, um. The train doesn't generally move much from that area, having taken the train for five years myself. Um, you could always stand in the same spot and. Gosh, at least seventy-five percent of the time, they, you would be at the same exact door at the same spot every single time.
Half a mile from the, uh, from the. Transit, transit loading and unloading zone as defined by the MBTA or something to that effect. Because it very, if that latitude longitude is theoretically a known number based on whatever is defined by the T, and then if they change it at whatever point in the future. That would change whatever the, the radius would be.
Yeah. I mean, they did, they have asked us about closing one of the cross streets so they could put in a station, so it could change.
The point is that if it's, it's, it's putting, it's putting a latitude and longitude defined by the MBTA, so that if it changes, that would theoretically change, because. It's going to change the way the state law is im- impacted, and that's an easily defensible methodology, right, it's half miles. If any portion of your lots within half mile from where you get on or off the T. That feels like it's something that's ea- an easily justifiable method.
Sure, I can also see if the state has any, I mean, they have a, like an email hotline. To reach out for some clarification, so I can see exactly what they're quantifying too, because we. What they're quantifying to, because we, because this regulation comes from the state level, we need to figure out what they're actually. What points they're actually utilizing, so I think that maybe that's the best place for me to start, and I can bring that back, hopefully I'll get a back answer back from the state. Um, and then we can kind of go from there to be able to use a little bit more, or to have a little bit more guidance and clarification.
Sam, just, um. Because I like looking things up, the coordinates, it's like almost exact, it's forty-two degrees, thirty. Yeah, it's like, it's north and then seventy-one degrees four minutes thirty-two point three seconds west. So, yeah, there is an exact coordinate.
Yeah, um, of having taken the, I mean, literally, having taken the train, you could stand at a particular pole or at a particular crossbar. And have that that door open in front of you over seventy-five percent of the time. Um, again, unless somebody else was driving or, you know, someone was getting trained, but none nonetheless, I will check with the state. Because that's really where this is coming from and versus us, you know, spending more time debating the merits of of what we wanna do with that. Um, so I can get some clarification, and then next, next time around, um. If they don't have any, anything more for us, then we can kind of figure out how we're going to determine that. Um, and I think the the bigger question, though, is do you wanna have it just be the half mile mandate, or did you wanna do more than that?
I would prefer just a half mile mandate, because if we go any more than that, it it's gonna turn into an issue, so. If if that's what we're restricted to, then I think we should hold that.
Yep, no, that's perfectly fine. And all of the definitions, um, I encourage you to review them. I don't know if anybody has any commentary, they're all from the state, they're not my definitions.
Sam, the only question I had is that, aren't some of these. Similar or redundant with some of the ones we just added for the MBTA overlay districts, specifically like dwelling unit?
I will double check, I. Don't think. So. MBTA is its own article. It's not even under, the way it's set up, it's not like under. The existing uses under zoning and the definitions don't apply. To the standard, they're not included in the standard definitions of the zoning code, they're just for. Article XX, Article twenty, um, which is the MP MBTA Communities Overlay District, the MOD districts. So, or MOD, anyway, um, so. Even if they're redundant, they still need to be included.
The MBTA were only applicable to the MBTA.
They're only, yeah, they're only applicable to Article XX, and this is under. Section twenty-two, chapter. It it's all still under chapter one ninety, it's just.
Applicable to the definitions for all of one ninety. Theoretically, right?
Correct.
So this wouldn't be creating a se- another separate standalone batch of definitions, okay?
No, my, hmm, after kind of looking at how other people had, some people have a standalone article for. Accessory dwelling units, um, but a lot of people have them housed under their accessory uses, and because that's where our existing accessory apartment was, which is gonna have to get. Stricken. Um, I figured we'd just put it back under there and just reword it.
And would the intent be to to take the existing accessory dwelling unit zoning that's currently within our bylaws? And omit it in whole?
Yeah, just to strike the entire, it's F, so the, it's not included in. The amendment that you, that I sent to you, the draft amendment, um, but it is included, I had already started writing up the article. Just so I could have it together, um, but it strikes, it it lists up the whole article, which is the previous F. Um, which is accessory apartments, and it crosses the whole thing out, and then would put this accessory dwelling unit. Into its place.
So, Sam, I I have a question, it's not. Something that's gonna go in in this, but. Are these units. Um, required to have a full kitchen, or or I mean, it says cooking, what? What's, are there any requirements that it have a? Full bathroom with a shower tub, uh, refrigerator stove. Kitchen sink, eh, how, what what are the standards for these?
So it says a self-contained housing unit, it doesn't have anything it beyond, it's inclusive of sleeping, cooking. And sanitary facilities. Beyond that, it's not specified, if you want to further specify it. Um, you're more than welcome to, I think the concern or the potential complication that we could run into is that sometimes if you. For some senior units or for someone with a disability, you might not want to have to have a stove. You might only want them to have a microwave, so they can't leave an oven on, like if they, if they're, you know, someone having dementia, I mean, I, and I say this. Not just from personal experience, but from somebody who actually had. Um, who was looking at buying a house that was on the market this summer. Or early fall, um, that they had a grand, a a parent who had dementia. Early onset, and they were looking for a house that had an accessory dwelling unit in it, the apartment, in-law apartment. Um, and they really wanted to make sure that it didn't have a full kitchen, um, so. I would, because you can technically cook with a microwave, you don't need a full kitchen, you can get a hot plate, and you can be able to cook that way. Um, I don't, I wouldn't personally recommend mandating something like a stove, if you wanna mandate that there's. You know, what is in a bathroom or what is in a kitchen, if there's anything you do want to, we can add that to the definition. I would recommend adding it to the definition of the accessory dwelling unit itself. But. I don't, um, I don't have any guidance from the state on that, uh, beyond the language that's already there for definition.
I don't know how other people feel, but, you know, I don't want. Really a hot plate and a. Dorm fridge to be considered a kitchen and. Some of these units get rented out as, because no one else has a choice of of where to go, but. I guess. It it seems like there should be some some standards. Defined as to, besides just. Um, living, sleeping, eating and cooking and sanitation. It's, it leaves a lot of, uh. Creative. Let's say, creative ways to get around what's actually. Just for someone to be living with.
I would suggest another point of view towards this, it is be, is following state local codes for residential and. When designing. Descri- describing single-family residential, hmm, that information isn't in there either. So I think it's more going to fall back to the residential building code. I don't think we need to. Restate all that information.
And the residential building code has ways that you can. Relieve of some of those requirements if it's specifically for other uses, right? You know, in terms of like. If you're, if you're just having like a typical resident, res- single-family residential, you need to have a full kitchen that ha- is more. Built out, but then if you're using it for a specific other.
Yeah.
Other, you know, methods for for in-laws or whatever, is there other mechanisms that you can have, you know, relief from those?
Possibly, I mean, you can have relief from anything, you just have to a- apply for that. What we're digging into is, we're thinking about it too much, we're getting into too much detail. Because are we gonna specify what is actually legal bedroom? Are we gonna start to look at how much window and glass and natural light needs to be in there, are we gonna start to talk about? Natural, um, air, um, exchange, so there's, there's stuff that the code takes care of that we should not be. Specifying.
And and that that's fine, as long as, as long as there's something in there and it it will be looked at and. And enforced, that's, I'm I'm fine with that, I I mean, I I trust that. People will do their jobs and 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 check on this, so.
Yeah, that's a tough one, um, a building permit needs to be pulled, but sometimes people don't pull permits. Electrical and plumbing obviously become very specific. Um, a- as well as structure, but really the whole electrical and plumbing, um, heating becomes very important. Um, to code-wise, um, when you're talking about GFI, just making sure there's no. Issues with people moving into apartments or units such as this, and they don't know what to look for, so the codes are there for that safety side. For us adding more detail. I I think, I think it's just repetitive, I think we could keep it very clean and possibly even remove this part, but. Um, and leave it as. That first paragraph that we have at the top about following the building codes.
And and I wasn't suggesting putting in this, I'm thinking some design standards that perhaps. Um, mimic the code or cite it, that this this shall be adhered to, something like that. Um, yeah, I get, I don't wanna add more specifics in in a zoning article.
Right, and you're back to the Brookline, um, example, they get into design standards too, uh, for exterior materials and stuff like that. But that's a whole different, um, side that we don't, we don't really do in Wakefield. Yeah, there's also light noise pollution, there's other stuff that we have talked about for other, uh, projects that we've worked on. That, again, I think if we have it as part of the, um, state and local, then we we keep it at that.
And and does. Probably you'd know better about this bill, um, for, you know, billing of. Electrical and. Sanitation and. Would this be uh, included, or how how does this usually work for these?
Well, in a a primary residence with an attached unit that has a separate entrance. Um, usually the, as the building permit goes through, there is an option to divide the utilities or not divide all the utilities. So there are some primary, um, residents, um, heating units that can expand. And that could be included in the rent versus having a separate heating system or like a mini split put in. So I mean, if that's what you're asking, there's, um, there are options in there, but providing a separate electrical panel. Um, is required. Uh, most homes cannot support another unit, um, on their existing electrical. I think what this will run into, and this is up to the building inspector and the electrical inspector, if the home, the primary residence is adding on an attached. ADU versus a separate ADU like a detached, they'll have to look at the existing, um. Electrical panel amps and heating system as well, so I think it all comes into consideration and it gets really complicated quickly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and that's, that's what I I see a lot of. People are gonna say, oh, I'll I'll throw a unit in and and I'll I'll make some easy money, but. Hopefully the code will, will, you know. Catch up and be enforced, and it it's it's done properly, so. Uh, some of these. Some of these buildings aren't being taxed with with too much load going out to the.
Right.
Back garage.
And it's gonna be the same as like snow load for structure for the roof, all that stuff is gonna be covered. Um, one item, Sam, that we might wanna address separately to make, um, it more prominent. Is the stretch energy code, that this is a new structure. And it will trigger a stretch energy code, because I don't believe there are any. Script footage minimum or maximums for the stretch energy code, it just says like an addition, a new addition will trigger it. So I wonder if that's something to. Look into.
There's a component. There's a component where. I did, I did start talking to Ben about this.
Okay.
Um, and I'll have to double check exactly how much.
I thought the stretch energy, the stretch energy code didn't apply to. Single families, it only applied if you had multi fam- there's like specific minimum thresholds, is my understanding.
Before we 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 get too much into that, but just let me, let me get the information from. From Ben, um, our inspector, and figure out exactly, because there's, there was also a conversation about. Is this, there's a square footage impact, um, and as to whether or not a. Car charger needs to be added, and so we were starting to talk about what what is that threshold for the stretch energy code to comp- um, component. So I think some of the larger ADUs will impact that, and we'll need to follow the stretch energy code, but. Before I I give you any definitive answers, let me double check, um, and I can give you the the clarification. At the next meeting with a lot of the other questions we had too.
And Jim, just one other point on that, that shouldn't trigger the existing primary dwelling. To be upgraded. Or updated, so that, that's something that I think if we clarify in the very top of this, or as we. Presented at some point, that it will, um, once Sam does a little research with Ben, that will help us define it. Properly. I I feel, I, my opinion is, yes, it should be hers fifty-five and stretch energy code just to. To help with the utility and the costs and all that stuff.
Okay, uh, anything else in terms of any of the definitions, or, um, I think we're. The, one, thank you very much, Sam, this has been a great starting point and facilitated a lot of really good. Conversation, I know we spent probably more time than anticipated on that, but. Um, I thought it was a really productive conversation, I think you did a really good job putting together a really high-quality first draft for everyone to. To do, and so, thank you.
And just to add to that, this was humongous, like, and Sam did, like you said, did an awesome job at just pulling it right down to. Almost like it's bare bones, so kudos, that's.
Yeah, well, I mean, the that really my, again, my goal, especially after talking to to Ben and dealing with the signage overlay. Is to try to condense this, but be as explicit as possible, and make sure it's something that anybody can read through and and get some some clear guidance from. Um, that's also part of why I wanna create the checklist and have the matrix, um, so that we can really make this easy for everybody. Um, to be able to to know what's going on, to know how to enforce it, to know what the parameters are and whatnot.
And, like, like other things, is it possible to get this posted on either. The planning board's website or the town planner's website immediately, so people. As they're looking at this can can see this and start digesting it, and hopefully. When we do have public hearings, that people. Are as informed as possible and and we're not getting, well, you hid this from us until the last minute, they were upon us, so. The, the more open we can, the this can, process can be the the better. Um, it'll only hopefully dispel that, well, it's been out there for months and or something like that, so.
Right, right, yeah, no, I have no problem, the, um, and Salem Street is now posted on the planning board's website, if you haven't already seen that.
Yeah, I saw that, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, anything else on item number four, ADU zoning, a potential ADU zoning amendment?
Well. I I. The next step's gonna be. Working backwards to make sure that. We have proper public hearings, posting times, and more importantly, if the bylaw review committee is gonna look at this. It cannot happen after it's been published, it needs to be before. So they need to look at this. Soon, so if if this is coming up in spring, which it sounds like you're pushing to do, correct?
Yes.
This, this, we need to work on this pretty quickly now. Or at least not quickly, but diligently and make sure that this ample time for the public. To comment on it before a public hearing and that the bylaw review in it, as we've seen on mul- multiples, the bylaw review committee. No offense, Kevin, but it's been a little bit slow in in responding to some of these things, so. Um, I don't want that to be held up at the last minute. But be that, be that, that be the holdup of this at the last minute.
Sure, not a problem, um, I have already, I mean, I did start talking to Steve in. In December, so last month, um, about what timeline I need to be cognizant of, so. That's part of why we shot for this meeting instead of waiting until February to try to give us enough time to. Have or to give the board enough time to review a draft, add any edits, have it come back and then forward it to town council and. Be able to start that whole process while also offering um outreach to the public um. So if you, if, you know, if we can have, finish up that conversation at the next meeting, then we should be on track to be able to get it. To spring town meeting still.
Do you know if the spring town meeting has been set that date?
Not that I've heard of yet.
Do you have any sense of when that may be, is it's anticipated to be Monday, uh, uh, well. Is there any guidance on whether whether it'd be a weekend or a weekday town meeting, do you know, Sam?
Um, spring town meeting from our charter, I believe, is always a weekday. Fall is a weekend, please, I think that's what I read. When I was trying to figure out, I believe that the Susan's nodding her head, um, that's what I've read, so there's it. From what I heard, it's a very full agenda, um. I don't know how long it's going to last, uh, but as of right now, what I do know, at least again from our our charter, is that. Um. The Steve's plan has has, or the the charters, the goal was always to have the spring during the week, um. And the fall and the weekend, that way it gives people a time to at least participate in some capacity.
So we should probably plan on, we should. Cause the the warrant is to close two weeks before, right?
It's more than two weeks before, um, it has to be finalized and published for two weeks prior to the meeting. So I can put, what I could do, um, so that we're not going back and forth too much commentary, I can put together. When I bring back the draft at the next meeting, I can also put together a whole. Whatever you wanna call that, um, like timeline of the step-by-step processes um that we need to go through.
Yeah, that, thank you, thank you, please and thank you. Cause otherwise, I think it, we just wanna, we need to have clear uh target dates.
Absolutely.
A reasonable timeframe in time for the town meeting in in April.
Yep.
Uh, okay, uh, anything else on item number four before we move on? Okay, in that case, uh, I'll move on back to item number three that we skipped at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, subdivision rules and regulations, uh, Mr. Noel.
Um, so, um, sorry. Uh, alright. Uh, town election, by the way, is April twenty-second, um, if that, does town, does town meeting happen before or after? The, so I, um, so Sam and Bill, I think have reviewed a draft and you wanted to talk about. Some aspects of it, uh, tonight, Sam. Um, and everyone's got the the red line draft, right, that. That that Matt had started and 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 the like, um, do we want? What, um, why don't we open it up to any particular? Comments or edits or deletions and then, um. Yeah, Sam.
Uh, through the chair, one really quick suggestion, so, um, I had mentioned this to Theo in an email and and having talked with Bill and gone over some of the edits. There will be some major changes to the stormwater components. Um, so it may be beneficial to wait until that's finalized, we're waiting for some information back from the state, it's nothing we have control over right now. Um, so it may be beneficial to wait to progress this component until we have that information, because we can't actually. I mean, there's, there's a lot of it, we can't actually clarify, we, we can't. Uh, i- if that makes sense, we can't approve new regulations without knowing what those regulations are, and the current regulations don't actually meet the new regulations.
When you say changes to the storm water, can you allow, like, what are we talking about in terms of?
It's not my wheelhouse, I'm sorry. Bill said that there, there's a big chunk of this that's going to change the components that we need. And how it, it needs to get laid out, he's in the process of updating it, but can only go so far because we're waiting on. Some components back from the state. And they're currently working on some FEMA updates too, I mean, there's, there's like a whole bunch of different little components that are, um, I think. Potentially could impact some of this, so.
Do you know if we have any idea when that might come through, the only reason I say that is because. My, I'm looking through, I think that we first started talking about this, like. June of last year, so. Understand it, if if it's gonna be like a substantial delay, I'd almost propose we just get a chunk done, cause we've done. We've been sitting around on this for so long, uh, unless other. Planning board disagree, but I'd love to at least have something so we can update it and then. If there's a whole new chunk that we have to deal with wastewater, that's a separate thing that might be in six months' time or whatever, we could just do that as a standalone.
It's just gonna rewrite this entire section.
Which, which?
So, the section that you had sent to us.
Yeah.
Um, there's a good chunk of it that's going to get rewritten and laid out differently because of the way the stormwater stuff is worded. So ultimately, it's up to you, um, I would recommend waiting, you're more than welcome, obviously, to do as you please. Uh, but I just would hold off on it, um. And there's also some, there's other comments that I had, he has, I had sent my comments to him. He was hoping to hear back and get the stormwater stuff clear clarified before the meeting, he just hasn't heard back yet, um.
Well, is he thinking that that's something that's imminent, or do you think that's something that's like six months away?
Yeah.
I think it's, it's pretty close, um, I don't think it's. It's months and months out.
Jim, I, I think it it's, according to my notes, it's, it's been longer than just a year, it's been a few years that we've been working on this. Um, and we already, you know. We've had at least one subdivision. Maybe two that have come for us with our old rules and regulations, we need, I feel like. We need to progress on this at some point, we we cannot keep putting it off for the next, the next bend in the road, that's, that's always coming up. So. Um. I I think we need to move forward to this at some point, because. We can, i- it's our rules and regulations, it doesn't need town meeting vote or anything, we just need to get them set. Have a public hearing on it. And get them published, if we need to revise it again in in six months when the, when something else has changed, we can do that, once we get. To a certain point, we can update them every year if need be, so, but we need to get to a point. That we haven't, you know, we haven't, we haven't been there in in, I don't know how long, but it's been a lot. And part, part of the thing that. I've, we had this written in a book at one point and then it went to E-code and things had changed when it went to E-code. And that was my whole impetus of getting this redone, because. There have been changes to this that were not adopted by this board, they were done administratively when it was. Typed in the computer by some third-party person, so. That's why I think we need to get moving on this.
If you do wanna move forward, um, I can, I'm, I could have sent you also, Theo, my comments. Um, that I had started working on after meeting with Bill and kind of going over it, there's a lot of redundancy about referring. Back to the basic regulations, um, that I think. At least from my point of view, from enforcement, um, or whatnot, it's a little tricky. Not tricky, um, it's just, it's, it's messy, the way it's, it's, it's written, um. Don't know, I don't.
Yeah, so. Yeah, I mean, I I would say all all of those edits are certainly welcome, um. So.
Cause I had sent it to him, I think, right before the holidays, yeah, um.
And, and you might be hearing some from Mr. Lowry, some, uh, you know. Motivation to move this forward, we've also had this conversation about waiting for feedback and then it gets pushed down the line, six months or so.
It's totally, totally understandable, so, um, that's why I said, I I don't have an issue with one or the other, um, some of the commentary I had. Was related back to, um. We don't have a definition of a butters, and it's one thing that I think that, um. Here, I can just send this over just so you have it, the. One of the the issues that I see, at least with. Applications I've dealt with, um, is that we, you know, there's, there's a handful of things, like we don't have a, a definition of a butters in. Our rules and regulations or in our code, um, for planning board. So there's no clear answer as to how somebody needs to go about. Notifying, if you refer it back to what the state is saying, it's still not clear if that's including. Uh, those who attach butters, or if there are any butters across the street, it just says a butters, it's a very, very vague term for planning board. Um, so that may be something that you want to consider as part of this.
I thought that we had. Point taken, that's probably a good. Thing to add, as part of this, especially given some of the commentary we keep receiving whenever we have any.
Yeah.
Submission.
Um, I also made a recommendation of reducing the number of physical copies. Um.
Yeah.
Asking for not only approved variances or exceptions, but also applications that are submitted. For such, so that we know that there are other applications that are going to be reviewed, um, and what components are being reviewed. I, uh, would recommend, if, I'm sorry, I I didn't mean to like hijack this, do you? Um, if if anybody else wants to step back or step up, um, one of the things too that I had added is a separate list. With the application, so what, with a subdivision, what they're asking for a waiver of. Um, Matt, you had talked about it not being explicit enough on some of the plans that have been included, like included, some of them are missing components. Um, it at past meetings, but I think it would be incredibly beneficial if there was an actual page. Included in the application itself of what they're actually asking for, instead of just saying, yeah, here's a subdivision and it's, if you. Review these fifty pages that are, or however many pages their application packet is, you'll eventually find it. But it should be very easy for us to find.
Well.
It should be easy for the public to look at.
That, that's why it, for the past one, our, the policy that we have have adopted is that any waivers will be. Posted on the plans, because it used to be the, a separate sheet. And then the plan, you you'd have to find a separate sheet, that separate sheet was usually undated and it would evolve. Or shrink down, so, uh, I know it's cumbersome for them to have to. Include these on the plans, but there's a purpose, there's a reason for that, so it is documented. At each step of what they're asking for.
Right, I'm saying in in to augment on the plans, there should be both, it should be an an actual pick, like. If you're going through the application and reviewing the page, it should be a page like waivers requested and then a list. Of what waivers are requested as part of the application itself, so that it's explicit. In addition to having them actually reflected on the plans.
We could do that, I always, we always run into which is the controlling, the ones on the plans or the ones in the application, so. Um, I'm under the, you know, I go under. You state it once somewhere and that's what you refer to, when you have it multiple times and multiple places. It leads to which is the controlling document. And it happens a lot, so if one thing is updated, but the other thing isn't. Then it gets into which is controlling, which is correct, so.
Sure, um.
I'm small for that, but I'm also, I can, I I already know what the issues are gonna be, they they aren't gonna agree.
Yeah, so my.
Make make the plan, right?
Well, my goal would be, and now that you have a staff that is going to be helping to review these. My preference would be so that it is, cause a member of the public can't come in and ascertain any of this. It's not clear, it's not easy to follow, um. Even somebody who's who's worked in the field, I have not had a situation where this is not explicitly spelled out, I opened up an application, I have no idea what the application is actually for. Because there's nothing on it, and that is, in in all the years that I've worked in various capacities, that is never ever, even with rezonings. It's not something I've ever seen, even in PUDs, it's not something I've ever seen, um, and while it it works. Part of my goal is in some of these processes, um, and applications I'm reviewing, I mean, we are also working on digitizing the application. So that they can be a fillable PDF, because right now they're like crooked scanned PDFs, um, and it needs to be accessible, so. It should be one, two, three, four, five, or A, B, C, D, like number it, I don't care how you number it, but it needs to be numbered, and then that should reflect. On the plans, and I should be able to easily sit down and look at the plans and go through and marry everything up, and if not, then you don't have a complete application, you're gonna have to come back. That would make your life easier as well, um, i- if you're, if you know that what you're looking at is a complete application, so. Part of what I'm trying to get toward is an actual application process, now that there's a staff person that is staffing the planning board. To help reviewing this, to make sure that there's a complete application and checks and balances, and that the public can be able to readily review this. Please tell me if you'd like me to not do that.
I'm not gonna tell you to not do that, but I I don't know if if waivers need to be in the application. Because they're gonna be. They're, they're gonna be discussed and basically negotiated through the board. Not as a procedural step, so. Um, I I don't know if they really should be in the application, to tell you the truth. The application should basically refer to the plans and and documents presented to the board. That, that's my opinion on that.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna side with Sam, um, on this, um, I think, uh. Right, you're, you're making the application a lot more plain English or or a lot more straightforward, even. Um, and the application is always just the starting point, the end, the end result is. The decision and the, and what's recorded, so, um.
I think the other thi- the other thing that, if you have it on the application, cause we seems like every time, or. Half the subdivision that come in, while it, all the conditions are supposed to be listed on the plans. They don't list them on the plans and they say, well, we're gonna list them when we fi- figure out what the final list is gonna be. So if you at least have them in the front end, and it has to be part of the application, and they can't get in the front, they can't even get in the, the plans through. Then, uh, in front of us without having them listed in some spot, then at least you have a starting point that you know that they're actually going to put on the, on there.
I just don't wanna waste people's time, is ultimately what it comes down to, is that's, that's my concern, is when you have an application that comes forward. That doesn't have everything that it needs, um, it wastes everybody's time and it wastes taxpayer money and the, the goal. I mean, part of my goal, part of what I've done in every single position I've ever had, is try to streamline some of these processes to make them. Both easier for the public and easier for the staff, but also easier for the board who's reviewing it, so that you know what you're actually looking at, you know that you have a complete application. That you're not spending your free time and meeting time reviewing the papers to see if it's actually even complete and can be discussed. That's the, really, the the impetus for for why I think it's, it's important to have that, um. Included.
Alright, uh, well, I guess it's up to, you know, the discussion on how the board wants to, wants to handle that. I, I, I think I've known, I've made my, my feelings known on that, so, I just. Seeing the process, I know, um, sometimes listing out every potential waiver in the application. Bloats that. Whereas. As the plans progress. And they're listed on there. You can follow along. The process of any. Uh, of of how it's playing out and the final documents, it's all recorded with. Everything in there. So. Again, that that's that would be my. My rationale for that.
All right. Um, so. Uh, what are our next steps? Um, we've got Sam, Sam's edits, um, other comments from the board. How do we? You know, what?
I guess work in Sam's. And if Bill has any comments to date. You know, anything to this point and then get a revised. Rules and regs out so we can discuss it. And and I am also, I I also suggest. Just for. Full disclosure that again, we post this so the public can can see it and comment on it as we go forward to. Cause at some point, we're gonna have a public hearing on this. And again, I want all the information out there so people can see. What we're, what we've been dealing with.
Yeah, let's um, I would say. Yeah, well. Yeah, we'll we'll post the. The next edited version. The. Yeah, so. Do we wanna give ourselves a deadline? Can we say by?
I'd like, I'd like to, I'd like to pick this up. If if we're just looking at the schedule, the next meeting we currently have. One fifty-four Salem Street scheduled plus. EDU. Which I imagine is probably gonna eat ma- basically that whole meeting. And uh, we have to double check with one fifty-four, but I'd like to tentatively put this for the two eleven. Twenty-five meeting. Unless you, unless you think that you need more time, but I think I'd like to do that and then maybe go through. This, the the proposed changes with the planning board, make sure we're all in agreement and then. Move towards adoption. Uh, unless we have further development in this, the wastewater. But otherwise, I'd like to get at least this. The the sections that we've met referenced that we've been look looking at for some time. Through and then if we can use that as a new baseline, cause at this point, some of these red line comments date so far back that it's hard to remember the history of them.
Yeah, yeah. Um, that that works for me for sure. So.
Yeah, I I think we, again, we're gonna need to move forward with this. So I do have a couple of comments and I guess I can send these to Sam. Um, it's for section G one. Uh, approval of a definitive plan, the the days in there. Are incorrect. Uh, it should be. Within a hundred and thirty-five days. If not preceded by a preliminary plan. So we have their ninety days. This is just um. From mass general law, I just wanna make sure that this is consistent with with MGL.
Sure, what, do you know what page you're on?
Page nineteen. Of, you know, the red line version. So basically the.
Yeah. Yeah, it's approval of a definitive plan. It's it's um. It's page twenty-one of twenty-two in mine and it's the very bottom.
Yes, just a timeline for the of approval.
Okay, the if you Theo, if you have it, if you, I think I think I found the one, but Theo, if you can update yours.
Yeah. All right, am I sharing my screen?
Yes, I can see it.
Yeah, okay. Alright, so what am I changing this to?
Um, it should be. Um, within a hundred and thirty-five days. And my language would be if not preceded by a preliminary plan.
Yeah. Got it.
And then or. Ninety days. If proceeded by a preliminary plan. And I don't know if that's the correct. You know, language to use, but that's what I have. That's what I came up with.
Got it. Yeah, at least. Well, um, we still wanted. Some some form of an annotated copy to ultimately. Be posting so that. Public could be informed of the changes, so.
Yeah, it doesn't need to be the a red line with markups. It can just.
Yeah.
Our our track right now.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. That. That's ideal. Okay. There. Do we wanna be marking up the application too at this point or now? Or I mean. Uh, anything else to come go along with this?
I I think we should just get this this move forward and not not so tying in the application with this also.
Fair enough. Alright. Alright, um. I think from a working perspective. Will endeavor to get. All of this uh sort of compiled. Um, I would say by February fifth or sixth. That way we can. Give you all something to read um ahead of time.
I'm happy to. To help tag up to try to get that done earlier too, so that there can be examples around.
Yeah, alright. Yeah. I have some li- limitations, so we'll we'll talk about. Um, this perhaps. And and come up with a a work plan, alright?
Yeah. Thank you. Uh, so we'll we'll tentatively have two eleven as a with a target, you know, about a week or so, it sounds like. Take it the the la- last. Or the latest and greatest and then we'll wait for for the feedback regarding whether or not there's the additional wastewater elements in there.
Yeah.
Um, okay.
Alright, thank you very much, everyone.
Uh, so in that case. The next item on, so that closes number three on the agenda, the next one is the planner update number five. So Sam, I'll turn it over to you for any updates.
Alright, I'll just uh try to be brief. The housing production plan is still progressing with the housing needs assessment is done. It'll be reviewed by the committee or the advisory committee. Um, on the twenty-first and then they're um steadily working on starting to get some of the components of the actual housing production plan together. Um, so we're still chugging along to have that done by late spring. Um, on time and. The grant administration, everything is is going fine with that. The ADUs, you have information, way of confirmation from the state and EO HLC that they have. Um, gotten MBTA communities. And they're processing that. So we are as of right now in compliance, um, because we are in progress. I don't foresee any issues uh as last discussed and then. Um, those are really the major things still working on trying to get the SHI. I'm just going through and double checking that everything is is up to date on there. Um. And uh, working to. Um, also support the Affordable Housing Trust um rap program, their rental assistance program, uh which has given out about fifteen thousand dollars now. Um, so that's that's progressing along, so kind of under the the same u- umbrella um as the some of the other efforts. Um, I will be in the process of updating both the planning department and the planning board website. Um, which has kind of been. Uh, kind of cobbled together. And I wanna try to make sure that everything is up to date on those as well. If there's anything that you feel is really important that needs to be included on them, please feel free to email me.
Um, Sam, one of the things I I think you heard Mr. Lowery mentioned a couple of times, but. I do, if you're, if we're gonna be doing a number of item or updates to the website, the. It's great having the the one fifty-four Salem Street. Documents up there, but I also think that the other ongoing items like the subdivision rules and regs. Uh, the draft as well as the ADU amendment, we wanna make sure those both get up on the website, so members of the public can follow along if they so choose.
Yep, I will get that. I actually have a note in my planner ready for tomorrow.
Perfect. Uh, anything else for under the planning up planner update?
Not tonight.
Uh, so for items not anticipated by the chair, so I did have one item regarding. Uh, potential non-compliance of the one ninety-seven, the hot street subdivision and I I know Sam, you'd reach out to the developer and they had not. To my understanding, they had not responded.
Nope, they have not followed up yet.
Okay, so uh in and Mr. Lowery, you brought this up to the to brought this up to attention. Maybe you wanna uh. Uh, bring other members of the board uh and kind of inform them what you observed.
Yeah, um, I don't know if anyone else is driven by that site, but there was supposed to be some tree protections installed. Prior to work out there and. They were not done. If you drive by now, you will see that it's up, but it's basically after the fact. I have some pictures, I I don't have them. Right now to show, but. Soil stockpiles were all around the tree. Other materials were around the tree. They've done some horrible pruning of those trees to make the. Basically dripped lines smaller anyways. And then um. When they went in there to clean up under the tree, you'll see a lot of branches that were basically just broken off. So those trees have been really. Not treated well and. Other issues out in the site, there's no erosion control. They had dug the cellar hole without proper fencing. I mean, it's a wide open site. Kids can run in there. I went up there at one point. After the foundation was in and there was probably a foot, foot and a half of water in that in that hole, so. That's a an attractive nuisance. It's it's basically it it's a danger. Um, but it's clear that. Whoever purchased this. Did not. Look at the. The deed restriction. The plan, anything up there. And more importantly. No one from the town has. Looked at, apparently looked at that either. I don't know if engineering is involved in that at all, but. Uh, I would assume that. The planning depart- or the not the planning, the billing department has been out there for a foundation inspection. This was never flagged, never brought to anyone's attention, so. It's really disheartening that. A small. Insignificant subdivision with one lot. Is not being managed. It does not. Give me good feelings on these bigger projects if if a small thing like this is not being managed properly, how a big one can be. So um. I I'm a little disheartened that it's gotten to this point. I don't know what to do at this point. To me. I would go to the building inspector, i- if it was up to me, I'd go to the building inspector and say. Pull the permit until. They come and talk to us. And they provide some corrective action, but they're just moving along. They don't really care because they know nothing's gonna happen in the end. So at this point. I don't know how we wanna. Proceed with this if we even want to, but. What's the point of putting in? Conditions that the. Original applicant agreed to if. Only to be sold off and it's gonna be disregarded. So. And and this is on something that. We go to great lengths to have plans. Uh, recorded so the general public can see what's going on and again, it's disregarded. So. That's basically what I've seen up there.
Mr. Spalding.
Matt, um, yeah, we've seen this before at different extents. Um, different violations. I know in the past, um, we've drafted. A very short. Precise. Um, letter um signed by the chair, sent to. Can't remember exactly, but we we would send this to. Sam as well as Steve Mayo, as well as. Um, the building inspector's office. I I think. We haven't done this in a while. I'm trying to think. The last few times we did this, um. I think it might have been the pool or the. Yeah, I can't remember. I mean, I I still have copies of them, but is this something, is this the right course of action, Matt, that? Um, we should take. Like we've done in the past.
I would think so, but you know, this is more of an immediate problem.
Yeah, that's.
If the. If the applicant or whoever's out there now is not responding. They they need to hear it loud and clear and unfortunately, this board has no enforcement mechanism. That would be to have to be. Come through someone in the town. Now, either, I don't know if engineering is involved with this at all at all yet, because there is a component that they need to inspect. And then obviously building department is is involved because I assumed it been granted a permit. I don't know.
Well, we did a cease and desist. For. A property on Montrose School Lane. That I penned and we uh reviewed and signed and we turned that around like the day after the meeting. It was sent to Thomas Mullin. Um, CC'd a few other people, but I mean, we. We can do that.
Yeah, and I think we had the same thing with uh. Uh, two lot subdivision on Salem Street where it had that detention. Base and the drainage out back.
Yep.
And ultimately. Ultimately, that that did not go too well because we were ba- basically overwritten by an employee of the engineering department.
Right.
That decided to let the applicant do what they wanted, so.
Right.
So perhaps a letter would help. Again, if if they've already disregarded. You know. A call back. They'll have the house built. I mean, it's going up pretty fast now anyways, so. We can try that. It's it's more a. I don't know, a cautionary tale of uh. We tried to document and get everything. To run the right way, but if someone chooses to ignore it. There's no consequences. We're seeing that a lot in life right now, so.
I mean. Kevin Theo, I'd be interested to hear your. Your read on. The situation.
Feel like we need to send the letter, otherwise this just kind of sets a precedent that. Whatever stipulations we set. On someone, they don't have to follow.
Yeah, I cer- I certainly agree. Would love to explore ways that we can, we can have more teeth or other. Uh, obligations um. Or, you know, the ability to to impose some. Some penalties. But yeah, the the letter has to be a. The first start.
Alright, we can, we can do that. I guess it would be sent to the app to whoever purchased this. We don't even know. I mean, the building department should know who. Who they're dealing with, correct? Is that, is that where you got the information from, Sam?
No, I had actually reached out. I mean, I had had prior contact with the developer before. Um, who. Was. Kind of reaching out, trying to understand what was going on with the permit, which I had no. I mean, it wasn't in my, the ball was not in my court. I had already done my component, but he was asking what was taking so long. So um. If there's any other components, yes, I would direct them at or concerns, the 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 best place to start is really reaching out to. To permanent. To permitting and building inspection and going from there.
Alright, maybe we, we get a letter together stating, um. That the conditions. Uh. Agreed to by the, uh, original developer or owner of this property are, are not being met and that. Um, we would like some. I, I don't know. Yeah, this is the thing, I don't know what the next step would be, do we want to have the applicant come before us? And then, then we propose a- and then. You know, basically the damage has been done out there, so at this point, what do we do? Do we have them clean it up? Do we have them? You know, add in some. New components to it, I, I don't know, this is. This is why it needs to be carried out from the start and we need to have someone behind us. Making sure it's done bef- you know. I, I know what I'm gonna do on, on the next subdivision that comes up is that we're gonna have s- conditions in there that. Um, tree protection, erosion control is gonna be put in. And it, there'll be a sign off on it, I've had to do this on other projects, you know, I don't wanna have to babysit people, but this is what it's coming to. Unfortunately. Whereas. Someone in place that could be taking care of this is not. So yeah, let's write a letter. I don't know, I'm gonna need some, uh, some guidance from you guys on. What do we say that they need to do? Come before us, fix it, what? That, that's the thing. You're gonna go out there, I know they're gonna say, oh, we, we put the tree protection up, if you drive by that, you'll see it up there, but you also see. That the. The size of the tree protection at the drip line is inadequate, it's not even close to that. The trees have been reduced in size and just hacked, so. I don't know, yeah, we can write a letter, but what do we say in it and how do we proceed?
Uh. I mean, I, you know, alternatives are, you know, uh, plant additional trees, um. Charitable contribution to the town for tree planting, um, elsewhere, um, the. Um. So, I mean. Yeah, I. Yeah, and, um, and certainly the applicant, uh. The purchaser developer needs to come back to the, back to the, the board to explain, um.
Yeah, and, and ultimately, in.
But.
Ultimately, the, the board's gonna have to sign off on this, which is why I'm always advocating for. This board to be the one who appro- file approval of this and not. The building department or the engineering department, so if something like this comes up. They can choose to ignore things until the end, but they still need to get it signed off. They shouldn't get a C O until the, and I don't know how it's set up, they shouldn't get a. A C O until the roadway is complete, unless they post a bond, I don't, I haven't followed up to see. What, how they proceeded on this. But, yeah, getting him in here sooner may help. I don't know. As you can see, I'm a little frustrated with this whole process.
For sure, um, and ri- rightfully so, um. The, I don't know, are there, um, I, I think. Yeah, I mean, it, it, it's a big, it's a big stick to say no C O until the planning board signs off on it.
Um, well, that, that really should be in there anyways, but.
Yeah, but, but right, I mean, you know, the, the good, the good faith has been failed, so.
Yeah. The whole point is, is that these things. Don't happen to start with, so.
And, you know, and we're C C-ing. Mayo, Mullin, the planning department, the building department, um, right, so you're kinda like. If you're putting that on notice, then you are saying, um, and, you know, the planning board wants to s- sign off. Um, prior to additional, additional progress is taken. And, uh, and ultimately before a C O can be issued.
Um, what Tom Mullin guided us towards, I'm just, I have a couple of different documents opened and. A lot of it is, um, a few of these were like restrict, one was a restrictive covenant. So enforceable, by the way, field planning board, so that was very specific. And we could act on it and we could ask for a cease and desist. And that's something we could do, um, because we don't have restrictive covenant for this one, but we do have. Uh, approved, um. I'd have to look, look it back up, look back up to see how we added, um, or didn't add the information. But it's really about existing trees being protected on safe conditions and just listing a few of those. Um, as those are listed and keeping it very, maybe even to bullet points, I think one of them we had, had bullet points, which was really good. Just to keep it simple, um, and then in the closing, it would be after reviewing the plan. Are, are the, um. The approved plans and the, um, planning board member visiting the site, we don't wanna name who went out there. Even though it's in this meeting and recorded, um, but we want to know that the Wakefield Planning Board will set a date. For the work to, to begin, if there is a cease and desist. And, and then it continues, so, and in there somewhere, and this is what Mr. Mullin added, failure to meet any deadline set forth. Above and reading through it, intent to rem- remedy the damages within ten days, so there's like a time component in there. Furnishing a plan to restore the area protected, so we don't tell them what to do, they tell us how they're going to do it. To bring it back to the state it was in, um, a- and this is, this is a common theme, it's like, if we start. Telling them to do certain things that are beyond what's already been approved, that I don't believe is something we can do. But we can ask them to bring it back to where it was, or give us a plan on what they wanna do and we can find a compromise. Um, cuz some things are not, and I, I understand Matt's frustration, some of these things are not reversible, um. Yeah. The action for this, uh, the result of the planning board referral of this matters to the town council for enforcement. I don't know how that works, I don't think the town council, S E L, um, is enforcing anything. But I think that is just in there to trigger, um, because this was a restrictive covenant. That it triggers the, um, lawful side of it, that's the correct terminology. I know that's a lot to talk about at nine thirty on, on a weeknight, but. Um, we've done this before and I feel like we should do this now and, and really figure out, um. An action. A letter to, I mean, maybe it starts with a draft to, um, Tom Mullin for tomorrow. So we can get input.
Alright, so the next question, I guess, is. Who's gonna put this together and, and what's, what's, what's the content of this letter, so? I, I didn't go back through some of my old. Unfortunately, I don't have some of that stuff on another computer, so.
Alright.
So, Bill, you said that there was a, you have a precedent letter that was sent.
It's, yeah, this is the most severe one because it was, um, about a, um, restrictive covenant. About non-disturbance of the property and it was disturbed. Um, it was cleared, so it was, it was pretty serious. And we were notified by a neighbor that it was happening, so we went down right away, contacted the owners to make sure we were doing this, um, properly. But, um. Yeah, um. I can't find. The other example I was thinking of that. It might be on my home computer, I'm, I'm still at work, it might be on my home computer where I have, um. Stuff that's back to like twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, when I do believe we had sent out two letters. Um, in a similar fashion, but more about, um, what Matt is talking about here. Not as severe as a restrictive covenant, but not following the approved plan.
Cuz I don't, I'm trying to find, I think, when we issue this, I don't think we had a restrictive covenant, no. As part of this subdivision, we just had a, conditions as part of the subdivision itself, right?
Yeah, we just have conditions on it, the conditions as agreed to have not been adhered to.
So then, to, to Matt's point, I'm trying to think of what, 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 cuz. If there's the conditions as part of the subdivision, then. Do they have any, I'm trying to see if there's any other obligations for them to come back to us before the completion of the, the project.
Normally, they don't, that, that's the thing is.
Yeah.
Again, it's in, it's in either building or engineering's hands to, uh, to basically enforce it. So maybe Sam, you can, maybe you can reach out to engineering and see if they have any, you know, if this is on their radar. It, it should be because it is a little, it's a subdivision, it, they need to put a road, you know, do some roadway work. Um, I know they've already put in a, a water line out to the street, I. I haven't seen if they've done anything with the sewer. I think they're gonna put gas out there, but that's something completely different, so. Um, at some point, they need to put some drainage in. It, it definitely calls for erosion control on that. Um, so that's gonna need to be done. So maybe check with engineering and see if, if this is anything they're working on now. I know building's working on it, I don't know, maybe you can check with them and see, i- you know, if, ask them. If they've reviewed the plan and if it's being followed out there.
Okay, can you confirm the address, just so I make sure I'm writing?
One ninety-seven Nahat.
Okay, that's what I have, I just wanted to make sure we're still talking about the, the same, um. The same thing for following from the engineering, and you just wanna check about. The street.
So essentially, Sam, the, in the, the subdivision. We had a number of conditions related to some specific trees that wanted to be protected, and so it's. Making sure those conditions as part of the subdivision are respected, cuz it's very clear that they have not been. As well as erosion control.
Okay.
Namely that they have some.
Right, cuz, and I think we, we even went, I think, Matt, we even drew. The limit of work line at those trees. I mean, we have to go back to the video to really look at it, but it was just agreed upon, it was like, yep, yep, we're gonna do that, we're not gonna disturb any of those trees, we'll put up a fence. Um.
There's gonna be staked out by a, a profession, a, a site professional, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me see if I can work on a letter tomorrow and I'll maybe send it to you, Bill, and see if you can. Work Smith a little bit and, uh. See if we can get this sent out.
Right.
So.
And really, it's, it's, it's a, it's a na- the nature of it is it's a letter to, to the other departments in. Town to essentially request them to enforce said conditions.
Yeah, I think it'll be to the applicant saying, um, it, it, we've. It's been brought to the board's attention that, uh, you're not following the. Conditions of the subdivision and. You know, what are you gonna do to, how are you gonna address this and, and what are your ramp, you know? What are your restoration or, you know? What are you gonna do to correct it? And then C C these other boards that, or the other departments that really should be involved with this, to, to let them know that. It's not being enforced.
Right.
And I guess that's all we can do at this point.
And so you're somewhat, who, who is writing, is, I thought that you're writing the draft.
I'm gonna work on a letter. And I'm gonna, I'll get something, it'll be short and sweet. I'm gonna need to know who the applicant is, or, you know, who's, who's working on it now. And their address, and then I'm just gonna make sure that it's, it's C C to the building department. The engineering department, probably Steve Mayo in town council.
S E L council, sorry.
You can send it to everybody, um, he doesn't really send it to anyone he wants, um, okay, I will work on getting, I know, I have his name, I don't know if I has. Have his address, I'll look it up though, um, see what I can get, um, and I can email that to you.
Okay, this is just a, it's one ninety-seven Han Street subdivision, I have the partial idea, I have the plan up, um.
I, I have a, I still have the file, I think, in my office, it's me.
Yeah, it was prepared by Andrew Dorni. I'm, I'm sorry, prepared for Andrew Dorni, D O R.
He doesn't own it anymore.
And that's right, that, that was the, right, okay. D P I engineering?
Yeah. Which perhaps was one of Matt's. Present comments about. Was why are we talking to you? You should sell it and we should be talking to your buyer.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Well, I, that is always, and I always bring that up. We can have all kinds of assurances by whoever's before us, but they're gonna flip it and. We're at the mercy of whatever we have documented.
Yeah. Really, yeah, thank you.
Uh, so, sorry, one note on this, sorry, Jim. Sam, have we received or have you received, has Aaron Kokinder received, um, any? Um, emails with abutters that have mentioned anything, because. There were a few that attended every meeting for the, these.
No, I haven't had anybody reach out about that particular project, not yet.
There was definitely some very involved the butters who are, who expressed, yeah, especially those trees, a lot of interest. Okay, any other, uh, any other notes on, on, uh, one ninety-seven before I open up to other items not anticipated?
Yeah, just thank you, Matt, for bringing it. To, to our attention.
Yeah, uh, any other item not anticipated by the chair?
Well, at, at some point, we do have a couple subdivisions that are. Gonna need close out that we still, we should get updates on, I know we've asked a couple of times, but there's, um. Up on Prospect Street and then Lova Sav, those are still ongoing, I've been up Lova Sav occasionally and. Uh, I know there's that, that couple A and R lots that are just at the entrance to. The subdivision and that is just a mess up there, I don't know what they're doing, but, um. And then the Lova Sav i- is really. I don't, again, I'm not sure what's going on there, they've got two houses built, one of them is sold, the other one has been. In construction for seemingly years. And one hasn't even been started yet and in the site, everything up there is just kind of a mess, so at some point, we. That's gotta be addressed. I know we've asked updates on it, but really, we haven't got much.
Yeah, one of, the person who had. Purchased some of the lots or owned some of them had come in, was really frustrated with the state of the closer lots. Um, the one house that's done and that's for sale. Um, it's not, I think it's been on the market for a couple of months, um. He was feeling very frustrated with the condition because it's hard to sell a house when there's, I mean, that. That's his opinion, uh, is that, or he, what he was expressing is that it's hard to sell the house when there's that right next to it. Um. So, yeah, at some point, I don't know if you wanna give that person time, but.
Cause those are, those are both Attorney McGreal. Subdivisions, right?
Hmm, I have to look up. I'm not sure if they both are.
Yeah.
I don't think Lo- Lovus might have had a McGreal at some point, but last I checked, he's not, he was not the attorney. He's not the attorney that I was. I think on the second part, I don't remember, because I think it was partially sold, and then there's a lawsuit that's going on for part of it. It's kinda messy.
Cause I think the last time we had, we had a meeting with them about closeout documents. Wasn't that, is that the? Back in like December of twenty three, I wanna say?
Well, we released one of the lots so it could be sold.
Yeah.
They built one of the houses down at the end of the cul-de-sac. That we we released that so they could get money in order to finish off the subdivision. And it hasn't really progressed since then, so. And yes, it is, it's, it was that is a McGreal subdivision with Hayes did the engineering work on that.
And I think we were reassured too that was something, and my notes are at home, I apologize, was. About the road and the completion of the road. I think we were really concerned and it was like some type of trade off, like, well, the road's gonna be done by. The other contractor. I I'd have to look back.
Yeah, and I I put a condition in there that whether the other. The person doing the A and R finishes the road or not, we will not accept. And sign off on Lovasav until the road to it. Is properly constructed, so either Lovasav needs to do it or the people doing A and R need to do it, but. It's gonna get done before we sign off on that road.
Right. I can't remember what surety we have on that, so.
I think the the demand or the requirement for the road was supposed to be with the first property, and then it got pushed off. To. The, I think the the C O or something, I don't remember the exact language off the top of my. Not right now, if I I probably could have told you a couple hours ago. But it is probably something that you might wanna consider looking at at some point, revisiting and figuring out what the timeline of that is, because. The building department considers it still under construction. So there's only so much that they'll do, but the neighbor, the one who's trying to sell the house is also concerned that it's a little bit of a fire hazard. Because there's just stuff, there's gar- literally garbage piled up. Outside, the dumpster's not been emptied, the site's not being maintained.
I just found, there was a passbook agreement amendment that stated that. At the board meeting at July ninth, twenty twenty four, we agreed to an extension to July one, twenty twenty five. So. And that was made with. Warren Tolman from R W Lovis Ave LLC. So we should probably. Reach out to that gentleman or whoever else we have on that property. And request an update since the. July one, we've got a couple of months, but. They were at the point at the the July ninth, they were supposed to complete in. They extended from December twenty fourth, twenty twenty two to July one, twenty five.
Yeah, so maybe follow up. Do you want to follow up in July, or do you wanna wait, or do, is somebody going to work on something like that now?
I was just putting it out there that we have these that at some point we need to work on, that's all. I, we don't need to put anything else.
Okay.
On the, on our docket right now, we just need to be aware of these going forward. For Prospect Ave. Subdivision, I believe that they need to put monumentation in, is a couple issues with the rain garden. It's pretty close.
Yeah.
So that shouldn't be an issue.
Okay, um, anything else on that? Um, on those two subdivisions, I I don't, I think I'm hearing that we don't need to necessarily take action at this time.
Agreed.
Uh, any other items not anticipated by the chair?
I do have one. If you don't know, last week, the Z B A. Denied unanimously both forty B projects on the Han Street. So. It's worth looking into if, this will be interesting to see where this goes next, but. Yeah, just wanted to bring that up to our planning board, so we're all aware, if you don't know.
Thank you.
Of course, there's way more to it than I just said, but.
Yeah, we're very close to our ten percent, too. We're creeping up there.
Uh, any, anyone else have any other items not anticipated? Okay, in that case, moving to. The last item on the agenda, item number seven, adjournment. Do we hear a motion to adjourn? Moved by Bill, seconded by Theo, roll call vote, Kevin?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you, everyone, for the time and thank you for taking the time on the A D U's.